Yeah, I guess whenever you're ready Doug, we can go ahead and resume conversations here.
Okay. Just quickly start out with secondary road fund. Quickly talk about the balance where we
Thank you.
Currently sit with that fund. So the table up top is the, shows revenue and it shows expenses and shows balances. Quickly, you can see that our beginning balance July 1 of 2024 was $5,271,847.40. And we ended December with an ending auditor's balance of five, or excuse me, $4,741,911.19. So we, our expenditures are budgeted more than what our revenues are for this fiscal year. And I believe that we are going to probably spend our budget this year looking at things. One thing to look at is the general basic transfers and rural basic transfers. And then the road use tax receipts, please note that for the road department or for the road fund, road use tax receipts are, are a majority of the, of the money that we receive to operate the, the secondary road department. And then I just have a financial statement that I'll share with everyone showing where we stand in the different budgeted categories, different things there.
Thank you.
Yeah. So with the secondary road fund, there are two sets of rules that county engineers need to follow in order to watch this. One is for the county itself, which if you look at the left-hand side, there's administration and engineering, roadway maintenance and general roadway. In the county budget, that total dollar budgeted, which in this case is $10,59450, you're not allowed to spend a dollar over that budgeted amount. And then construction is capital projects, which in this case is $2 million, we're not allowed to spend over $2 million. With the Department of Transportation, they look at the total budget as being $12,59450. And you can spend up to 10% over in each one of the groups, whether it be engineering, administration, roadway maintenance, general roadway or construction. So if you look on our engineering-
But still can't go over the total?
You still can't go over the total.
Yeah, thank you.
If you look, we're through, this is through December, which is 50% of the budget. You can see that engineering and administration were right at a total of 45% of the budget spent, which is one thing that you can't control. It's mainly just the engineer's office salaries and then things that go with the office expenditures. In the roadway maintenance, we're at 47.33%, which is pretty normal for this time of year. We really have not had any snow or ice removal and we've pretty much had all of our road bridges and culverts and traffic control and road maintenance as far as gravel crushed, road maintenance type of activities, those are pretty much completed. So we're at 47%. And then the general roadway, which is new equipment, equipment operations, tools and real estate. We're a little bit high there, but I think when everything comes out, it's going to be all right. But I do think that we'll probably spend our whole budget this year. So when we get finished, we will be down. Our balance will be lower than what it started out with. Next, I'd like to just hand out some stuff and review some information about secondary roads. This is data that comes from a couple of different sources. One is the 2024 report of roads and bridges from the Iowa Department of Transportation. And another one is the census. And I call this geography road bridge information. All the counties are listed here and in the columns, the highest value is in green and the lowest value is in red. But if you look at pages one, two and three, that's a list of all the counties. And for example, area, each county's area is listed. And if you look at the last page sheet four, you'll see where area, Cassuth County's area is 973 square miles. It is the largest in the state of Iowa. And the minimum area is 381.1 square miles. So Cassuth County is the largest area. If you look at total miles of road, Cassuth County's value is 1,647,000, or 674 miles. That is the largest roadway system in the state of Iowa. If you look at dirt roads, we have 190, or excuse me, we have 29.5, 29 and a half miles of dirt road. The largest in the state is 199, the lowest is zero. There are 48 counties that have a greater number of miles of dirt road than what Cassuth County does. Granular surface roads, our value is 1,104, uh, 104 miles. The maximum is 1,105. We, there's one county above Cassuth County that has more paved roads than Cassuth County. Or excuse me, granular surface roads. Paved miles is 513, the max is 545. And there's one other county that has a greater number of paved roads than what Cassuth County has. Total number of bridges, Cassuth County has 248. The county with the largest amount is 394, but there's 15 counties that have more bridges than what Cassuth County has. Bridges in good condition, Cassuth County has 109, that's 44% of our bridges. You can see that the largest county with good, good condition bridges is 248. But as far as number of bridges in good condition, Cassuth County is 13th on that. There's 12 counties that have a number more. And then the percentage, we're 22, there's 21 with a better percentage. Bridges in fair condition, the same way. We we are up there, there's, in fact, fair bridges, there's 55 counties that have more, more bridges than what we do in fair condition, percentage wise. And there's 66 counties that have more percent poor. And then you look at the staff of the engineer's office or in the secondary road department. The total employees of the secondary road department in Cassuth County is 41. The maximum value in the state of Iowa is 66. There's 16 counties that have more employees than what Cassuth County has. Office employees, Cassuth County has six office employees. The highest number in the county in Iowa is 16. 17 counties have more office employees than what Cassuth County has. Road employees, we have 31. The highest number is 47 in the state. And 18 counties have more road employees than what the county, what Cassuth County has. And then mechanic employees, we have two right now, but we should have four. The highest number in the state is seven and nine counties have more than what we have. So that just gives you a little bit of an idea of some of the geography, some of the offices.
Doug, can I ask a question just because I didn't know this and I want to make sure I'm reading it correctly? Is this saying that Hancock and Winnebago combined have less square miles than Cassuth?
Yes.
And same for Emmett and Palo Alto?
Yes.
Interesting. I did not know that.
About two, or 1.4 miles, yeah.
Some of that is, I mean, the, that's coming from, that isn't coming from the original government survey. My calculations from the original government survey is not the same as what that website provides. The next thing is information from fiscal year 2023 annual reports, which report expenses and revenues. Took some information from some reports here and I'd like to share with the board supervisors. Again, it's just a list of all the counties and administrative costs in the left. And if you look at the last sheet there, you'll see a summary of everything, but Cassuth County's administrative cost for fiscal year 2023 was $180,907. The highest in the state of Iowa was 880,632, the lowest was 85. As far as ranked in dollars only, Cassuth County ranked 79. That'd be from high to low, so there's 78 counties spending more administratively than what Cassuth County did. As far as administration and engineering, Cassuth County spent $890,950. The highest was $1,905,378. And Cassuth County ranked 15th there. There was 14 counties that spent more than what Cassuth County did. Roadway maintenance, Cassuth County spent $5,105,296.95 on roadway maintenance. The highest was $9,789,592. Nine other counties spent more on their roads maintaining them than what Cassuth County did. And then in general roadway, our dollar amount was $4,527,390.42. And the highest was 500, $5,663,240. Three other counties spent more for general roadway than what Cassuth County did. If you look at administrative and engineering road in general, if you combine all of those, Cassuth County's $10,523,637 spent. There were six other counties that spent more than that in their budgets in fiscal year 23. Construction costs, Cassuth County in fiscal year 23 spent $4,182,418.53 through their local budget. There were three other counties that spent more than what Cassuth County did in construction. And total expenditures, $14,760.56. There were four other counties that had larger budgets, expended costs in their annual reports than what Cassuth County did. Now, if you look at the fiscal year 2023 rural basic levy rate that for per thousand for valuation, Cassuth County had $1.74539 per thousand dollars of valuation. 92 counties had higher levy rate than what Cassuth County secondary roads had for that. If you look at rural dollars, that levy rate produced $2,108,259.26. 44 counties had higher dollar amounts, local dollar amounts going to their secondary road department than what Cassuth County had. If you look at the general basic rural levy rate, or excuse me, the general basic level levy rate, Cassuth County leveled levy 16, 16 and 17 dollars per, 16 and 17 cents per 1,000, which is the max that can be levied. 18 counties actually had levy rates greater than that max. In dollars, Cassuth County received 260, Cassuth County secondary roads received $268,261.60. 14 counties actually received greater general basic dollars than what Cassuth County did. And property tax, the total property tax transferred from rural and general to the secondary roads. Cassuth County received $2,376,520. 39 counties transferred greater dollar amounts, greater local dollar amounts to their secondary road department than what Cassuth County did. Local option service and sales tax transferred to the roads in fiscal year 23, $500,000 was transferred in Cassuth County. 28 other counties had greater dollar amounts transferred to secondary roads. And then if you look at the total, local money transferred to secondary roads from the counties, Cassuth County received $2,876,520. And 37 counties received more local money to secondary roads than what Cassuth County received. I think that's important information that the board supervisors can hold. And when questioned about expenditures in secondary roads, you certainly can defend yourself as far as comparing to other counties with that information. Cassuth County, I think, is doing very well as far as local dollars in operating their road system. And then the last thing I'd like to show you is just some information that I have calculated using the figures that I've presented.
Thank you.
So again, the values are all in there and if we look at the last page, the first column is secondary roads, local spending per square mile. In Cassuth County, we spent $2,956.34 per square mile, local money. 81 counties in the state of Iowa spend more local money per square mile than what Cassuth County does. The second column is secondary roads, local dollars per total number of roads. This is the total local money divided by the total number of roads. Cassuth County spends $1,746.44 per mile road, local dollars per mile road. 82 counties in the state of Iowa spend more, spend a higher dollar amount of their local money on their roads. Engineering and administration, plus the road maintenance, plus the general roads, those are, that would be our budget without the construction in it. Cassuth County spends, this would be per area, per square mile. That budget, the local expenditures, $10,815,066 per square mile. 62 counties spend a greater dollar amount than that over the area. The, again, the administration, engineering, the road maintenance and general roadway figures, Cassuth County over the per mile of road, Cassuth County spent $6 million, or excuse me, $6,389.27, 29 cents. 70 counties in the state of Iowa spend more than that. Administration, engineering, road, general, per total number of bridges, we spent $42,434.2. There's 32 counties that spent higher amount than that. If you look at just the administration and engineering costs per area, we have $915.67. There's 81 counties that spend more than that in the state of Iowa. If you look at the administration and the engineering costs per total miles of roadway, we spent $540.93 in Cassuth County, 81, again, 81 counties spend more than that with their engineering administration. If you look at the administration and engineering costs of all the total bridges in Cassuth County, it's $3,592.54 per bridge. That ranks 46, so 45 spend more than what Cassuth County does. If you look at our total area per employee, secondary road employee, we have 23.73 employees per, per area, which means that we rank four. There's three counties that would have, this one always kind of coops me up, but they would have a higher number, higher area per employee ratio than Cassuth County. Cassuth County ranks four there, our area per employee. And then if you look at roads, road miles per employee, it's 40 miles per employee. And there's three counties that have more roads per employee than what Cassuth County has. I believe secondary road department in Cassuth County is efficient, it spends its money wisely. And I wanted the board to be aware of that. Now we return to-
Thanks for all that information.
You're welcome. Return just a little bit to salaries before we start talking about the budget. Here's some information I've prepared and this is what I propose for salaries. And if the board would like to discuss more on the road operators, I'd be more than happy to visit with you about that. The left columns are what the current wages are. And the right column, the middle column is what I proposed. And then the percent change is in the right-hand side, the dollar change is on the right-hand side. Everything is kind of similar to what the county engineer's salary is. As far as office, office staff, I have a table that has steps and qualifications in it and percentages then of what the engineer's salary is to determine the chief assistant county engineer, the assistant county engineers and the assistant to the county engineer and the office manager. I think with the information provided earlier, it's clear that our, our engineering and administration costs per area, per mile, just in gross figures, are not anything that's out of line comparing that with the state of Iowa, with the rest of the state of Iowa. In fact, I'd like to just share this with you. This is information about the county engineer's salary. So this is all coming from, this is information that's compiled by the Iowa County Engineer Service Bureau. If you, all the counties are listed. October 30th of 2024 is in the left and then it goes back to January 1 of 2015, what the salaries were. If you look at the last sheet, you can see the number of county engineers that have been in each survey. You can see what the highs, what the lows, what the average salary is and what the median salary is. I think it's important to look at December 22, January 1 of 2022. Those were January 2021. You can see where the Cassuth County engineer was right around 110% of what the average is. And if you look at October of 2024, Cassuth County's engineers compensated at 102% of the average. Over the last couple of years, Cassuth County has not kept up with what other counties are paying their county engineer. And for that reason, I asked for the increase that I've asked for. And I think if you look at all those figures, you'll see that we are not being paid what our comparables are in our office or in the secondary road department. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I guess I'll, I'll start. I appreciate the Excel sheets and tabulated information here, but in the FY 2023 annual report info, if you go to summary on the back, you've got the second column says administrative and engineering costs. And Cassuth ranked high to low is 15. So there's only 14 counties in the entire state of Iowa that are spending more than we are. But you're saying we're, from what you've been saying, it sounds like you're saying we're low on engineering costs and-
That's for the whole office, but you've got to take into consideration that Cassuth County itself is the largest county in area, the largest county in miles. One of the largest county in bridges and what the engineer's office do. We design, we maintain a road system, one of the largest in the state. And we are not by any means the highest. When you start dividing the per mile, the per area, the per bridge and look at that, that's what I'm saying.
I think we may have- I think we may have different views of the same information.
I'd say we, we could very well spend a lot of time discussing this, but as we've. Discussed with the board previously, for now, we're going to stick with the four percent number until we. At least until we get numbers from health insurance and other, get through the whole budget and see where we're at.
So are you saying that the county engineer will only be receiving a four percent?
I'm not saying.
Is that what the board supervisor is telling me?
Yes.
As of today, yes.
You guys have this stuff? Do you want me to go over it? You guys got the numbers?
That is your question.
Of the budget work sheet?
Yeah.
If there's any, if there's any.
And that is the board's decision?
As of earlier today.
We, is the board thinking at all about retaining employees?
Absolutely, absolutely.
We got to start somewhere here.
We're just also very concerned with our dollar amounts, and we're, you know, we're just.
The secondary road fund is healthy.
Yeah. I don't know if we can officially make any decisions of, you know, of anything. It's just having a point where, I mean, of course we want to keep good employees, that's always been the goal and.
And if you need employees, you want to be able to recruit employees.
Yeah.
If you look at Clay County recently, I don't know if anyone knows this, but Clay County engineer resigned. The new Clay County engineer. Received a ten thousand dollar signing bonus. And has compensated one hundred sixty thousand dollars a year. That's for a county half the size of Cassuth County. I don't know what the mileage is, it's not exactly half. I would, I would, I would ask you to look at Crawford County, maybe talk to their board supervisors, see what's going on there. I know that they're having a county engineer that is retiring.
What, what are, what are we going to find out when we, when we talk to them? It takes more.
It takes more, definitely it takes more. The Clay County engineer that resigned. Last year, his salary was one hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars and ninety cents. Now it's up to a hundred sixty. The county engineer from Dickinson County went there, and he received ten thousand dollar signing bonus.
Does Dickinson County not have one right now?
Uh, they just hired somebody, my understanding, I'm not sure what it is, what this, what the salary is. I don't know if it was included on this situation. It's not.
I think the hard part is maintaining fair, fairness across the county.
Well, I, I think the county engineer and the county engineer's office, we have professionals. We have people that are licensed. As they gain experience, as they. Get years of experience, they become more valuable. You can see that just by looking at the county engineers, what's going on.
Experience is valuable.
And to be honest with you. I, I understand your fairness with the four percent, and I hate to go backward. But there were times where the county engineer's office, two years ago, all received the same dollar amount for an increase. And other county, other county employees receive double-digit percentile increases. You can look at the Cassuth County engineer's office manager, the work that she does. She works thirty-eight hours a week. And you can look at other deputies in the courthouse who do not work that many hours, but they're substantially higher in pay. By substantially higher, I mean ten thousand, over ten thousand dollars. That's, if you're talking fairness, just look at an hourly wage, it's not the same. For a job that's similar.
And that's understood, I know that when things changed, I don't know all the details about it, but I know that. There were people that weren't included in, in different increases. And that's kind of created a little bit of a rift, and, and people have been here a year, got huge increases. And people have been here thirty, didn't get anything more. I understand your point of view completely. Where I'm at with it, yeah, and I know you, the secondary road budget's healthy. My big concern is all the other funds. And to explain fairness to everyone, are your increases fair? Yep, probably. But it's, it's difficult, we're in a very difficult year transitioning. I, I mean, that's my fear, walking in here, that it's a difficult year to transition into knowing, okay, where are we at? That's the scary part for me. We have really good employees, I get that, I want to keep them, I want them to be happy here. It's a difficult position to be in coming in when it was zero last year. For some, and not all.
Well, for some reason, other counties are able to compensate. And I'm just looking at secondary roads, secondary road employees, secondary road engineers, administrators, office managers. They're able to do that, and that's what I'm comparing, is when I'm looking at other county engineers. When you see that. The engineer, county engineer's salary has went from ten percent, approximately ten percent to above the average, a hundred and ten percent of the average. And now it's closer to average, Cassuth County's not an average county. It's just not. The number of paved roads in Cassuth County, there's only one other county that has more paved roads. You look at some of those counties, they, they don't even have a hundred miles of paved road, Cassuth County has over five hundred.
How long's Lisa been here? Because I know she was in the treasurer's office first, how long?
Seven, I think, is what she's been in her house.
Seven, and then she was in longer.
What's your interpretation of how they're able to do that? Is it just.
Well, two years ago.
Priorities, or, or is it more to it than that?
Two years ago, and I'll be honest with you, some counties raised their rural tax asking for secondary roads. My understanding, talking with other county engineers.
Say that again.
Can we do that, can we raise it?
Say that again.
Two years ago, when, before House File seventeen.
But they're going to have to get back to, I, I don't, I don't.
No, they're, they're within the law.
But they did it before.
But they did it before the dollar amount limits.
Right.
And I don't know what Cassuth County did for sure, I believe Cassuth County decided to lower it.
They did.
But they're going to have to dial back?
No, 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 because at least it'd be important.
Their limit to growth their dollars is not affecting them because they increased their dollars prior to the.
Was that luck or foresight?
Foresight.
You, you, you would have to talk to, talk to them, I have an opinion, but I'm not going to state it.
So was there, I mean, no point in having to rehash it, I know, but, so was there somebody shouting from the mountaintop that we shouldn't be doing that at the time?
You'd have to talk to the board that decided that. Because I, I told, I warned the board not to do it, I'll go on record of that.
Not to do what?
Not to limit it. There was all sorts of foreshadowing that, that there was going to be limits and. In fact, two years ago, the Cassuth County board supervisors met without any of my input and reduced. Took the secondary road department, reduced it to a point where we were looking at, at. Possible reduction in road use tax and not being able to spend our farm-to-market funds because we were not able to meet. A seventy-five percent requirement of local effort. And I don't think I should be blamed for any of those decisions. I sure hope no one would do that, and if I'm wrong, speak now.
There's a lot more to that story.
Okay, I'm here, I'd like to hear it.
We, we can hash all, two years out, year ago, whatever, but we got to.
But don't penalize the county engineer, or the county engineer's staff, or the secondary roads for those decisions. We still have a good, we have a healthy secondary road balance. And that secondary road fund is all itself.
How much is going to be left in the secondary road fund if you spend your entire budget this year?
Four million three hundred ninety thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and forty cents.
Five hundred?
Four million three hundred ninety thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and forty cents.
What is a typical year? Like, maybe what was, did you ask him for if he spends it all this year?
Yes.
Okay, what about like here, what about the year before? Like, what was your ending balance, are we comparable to that?
Uh, the balance on July one of two thousand twenty-four, the beginning of this fiscal year, was five million two hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and forty cents.
Okay, and sorry, not to make your, the other number again, will you repeat the four million dollar number?
I estimate our balance on June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, of four million three hundred ninety thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and forty cents.
Okay. When, I, I have a question, when the different increases were discussed as far as different offices and starting in. You get a raise every six months and another increase after a year, was anything done for the engineer's office and staff? At that time, were they included in any of those discussions?
The changes that were made, were made to employees of the step program would have applied to, which was not the county engineer's office. And that was for legal reasons with the step program.
Okay, and.
So, so no, but this is just to answer your question.
Okay, so is it safe to say that the decisions made with that probably did affect other employees? That now maybe are behind, like, you know, and I'm just looking at Lisa because I'm more aware of probably the office salaries. Lisa right now is at fifty-five thousand, and she's been here, well, I wish I knew for sure, how long, can you look her up, just see?
Fifteen years she had her service, year of service recognition, not that long ago.
Okay, so fif- fifteen years, and somebody working here a year is going to make fifty? I don't know. Sounds a bit unfair, and if there's legal issues, that kind of sounds like one to me.
I don't know, I don't know, it's so much a legal issue, but you, you like, you go to the, it's kind of like going to the, well, secondary road department. And you got a guy that's worked for a year, and a guy that's worked for thirty years, and they're getting paid longevity difference. You know, as far as salary or hourly wage goes.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and I get that.
So, and is that fair? No, probably not, but it's.
Probably not. But, but with these offices, I mean, that's, that's a.
But they are, they are, are doing the same jobs.
Correct.
That's the basis of what we were.
Correct, and I believe, I believe that if you look at the. Office manager of the Cassuth County engineer's office, and you look at the job that that person does, it's similar to deputies. In other offices of the courthouse.
She worked more hours.
And if you look at just straight, yes, if you look at just straight hour, and I'll bring that data up to you. I have it going back twenty years of what the proposed, what was proposed for in, for employees and what they're actually paying.
I'm, I'll walk a line here that I don't know how much detail we really can or should be sharing about those conversations at the time. When those changes were made, but they were based off of employees that were doing the exact same job description. Not being paid the same wage. So as much as you, or I, or anyone else on the board may agree or disagree. With a comparison between an office manager and secondary road department and a deputy in another office, they are not the same job description. So whether they're comparable or not is a matter of opinion. But on paper, they are not the same job description, and that is what the law is.
So the recorder, the description of a deputy in a recorder's office is the same as a deputy in the auditor's office, is that what you're saying?
That is not at all what I just said.
But that's how the deputies are compensated.
No, they are compensated as a percentage of the elected official that they serve under.
But you just said the job descriptions of people that are identical, I believe you just said.
No, I'm saying the position you compared in your office and a deputy under an elected official. Those two are not the same job descriptions.
I said the job duties are similar.
But that's.
I didn't say the job description.
I, I'm being very specific with the words I choose, the job descriptions, that's what those changes and wages were based off of. Employees that were doing the same job had the same job descriptions and were not being paid the same. That's where our issue lay, that's where changes were made because of. So to compare two other employees that don't have the same job description. On a legal basis, doesn't matter whether that's your opinion, or even if I agree with you or disagree. It, it, that's not the point of the laws that we were talking about.
I'm just talking, you can talk fairness, when you have a person that works thirty-eight hours. And has, does similar duties, that's what I'm talking fairness.
We can talk hours of all employees, that's a whole different conversation.
I don't need to bring that up, I, I mean, I'm just talking about, I'm comparing right now, office manager of the Cassuth County engineer's office and deputies. In there, and I'm not saying anything negative about any deputy. They, they do their work, I know they do their work well. But I feel the office manager and the Cassuth County engineer's office should be compensated more along the lines of the deputy office.
And just speaking in terms of in the past, just I remember when I was working in the office, and I was not the auditor. But they were, I think they tried to keep Trish and Jane the same. Jane was a deputy and Trish, they tried, you guys tried to keep them similar. At that time.
Correct, but over the, over the last few years, again, it, that hole's been dug. And it's a hard hole to get out, when you, when you start going down, you, it takes something to get out.
Yeah.
And. If, if the, if the intention of the board is just four percent. You're going to go deeper into the hole and not start getting out of the hole.
Yeah, and I think that's understood, I think it's just really hard from the aspect of trying to be. Walking in here saying, okay, we gotta, we gotta be fair, well, that's a double-edged sword. Okay, what's fair? Is it fair amongst everybody? You know, that four percent is, but is it fair? I don't know, because I don't know, like I said, you see this in front of you, and just because I know about Lisa's, it, I mean. Her wage doesn't seem fair in comparison. I don't, I don't know about engineers, I, I can't, but just going off of what Doug put, but, you know, Lisa for sure is, is not. So I don't know what the remedy for all that is. I really and truly don't. Yeah, so. And, and when we go to a zero increase like, like what happened last year, and I know it wasn't everybody, hard to catch up. Hard to catch up, because then everybody, you know, says, well, you know, I'm on double this year. Well, how do you go back if we didn't have the money last year? How do we afford to give double this year? Not saying each and every person isn't worth their, their pay, but how, how do you do that? How do you just by zero one year, double the next and maintain a healthy budget? That's my problem with things. I would, I just, that's why I'm saying consistency is a good thing. And evidently, this kind of, this decision that was made did create an inconsistency, and maybe the engineer's office is not the only office. But we don't know, because we haven't been through all the budgets, but.
And, and just for where we're at in our, in our day here, I know, I know Kendall's been waiting a while, and we've got a couple others. And you just need to know direction as far as tell others not to come, or maybe we should have a further workshop with Doug. I think it's kinda what I'm getting here is we need to have some further conversation here.
Yeah, I don't think that the way just, the secondary road department can be hashed out today. I think that too much information's been given to us, and I don't know where to go with it.
I think let's, let's, let's sit on the information we've been given, and we'll, we'll resume this conversation in another day, just because we do have a lot to get to here this afternoon.
As far as equipment, I've budgeted two million dollars for equipment. We have seven maintainers that are. Pardon me?
H four.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh.
What, I, I didn't see engineer.
Engineer.
It's under engineer, not secondary, so maybe it was.
Yeah, so.
Got it.
Sure.
If the budget was approved as presented from you, what's is your estimated income balance if you sign all of this on balance? Or all of this your budget and all of the local, you put together?
On June thirty, twenty twenty-six, it'd be three million, nine hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and forty cents.
Do you have the sheet that determines your, the transfer?
I do.
And maybe I'm dropping my head, but I was just curious what that number looked like, if it's changed much or.
For, we can certainly go through that quick. So this would be the local dollars going to the road department. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the top box there, the maximum levy, that could be levy for secondary roads is sixteen and seven eighths, that's general basics, sixteen and seven eighths cents per thousand dollars. And the, for rural services, it's three dollars and three eight cents per thousand. Our current fiscal year, the valuation of general of all the property in Cassuth County is one billion, seven hundred twenty-three thou, seven hundred twenty-three million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars. For the rural area, it's one billion, three hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars, one hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars. If someone looked at the maximum amount of revenue that could come to the county road department, that dollar figure would be four million, three hundred one thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars. What we actually had in this current year is we used the maximum dollar, the maximum levy rate for general basic, and we used a dollar eighty-two, dollar eighty-three, giving us two million, seven hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. And that ends up being sixty-three percent of the maximum dollars. Now, there is a part of the code that I referenced earlier, or spoke about earlier. Every county has to, they have to have effort, local effort of seventy-five percent of what their maximum property tax revenue potential is. Cassuth County, we have, we, Cassuth County pays some insurance, some property and vehicle insurance out of general fund that is go, goes as a matching dollar, and then also there's local option, uh, sales and service tax. What I propose for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, the valuations have increased to one, for all county is one billion, seven hundred eighty-two million, ninety-four thousand, seventy-six dollars. And for the rural area, it's increased to one billion, three hundred eighty-seven million, six hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred one dollars. The maximum revenue potential for that to go with secondary roads would be four million, four hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars. And I propose to leave the levy rates the same, and that would generate two million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars. To meet the seventy-five percent threshold, I quickly did some calculations, three million, three hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents is needed. I budgeted this amount for revenue, and I've also budgeted a million dollars in local option sales tax similar to last year. So with that, we will easily meet that. And then I budgeted one million dollars for construction. We have a local bridge right now that is under contract, six hundred fifty thousand dollars. I don't know when they're going to start. They're not gonna get that all finished this year, so we do need money in local construction for next year. I don't know what the board's intention is for borrowing money for the TIF, but I need to have some guidance on what projects you would like to get constructed. I do have some maps. The accomplishment year right now that we are in, we will be letting the resurfacing projects that are highlighted in yellow March of this year, and that'll be led at the Department of Transportation. The bridge north of Sexton is the bridge I was just talking about that has been let. The bridge that is showing up right to the east-west of Tiptalka is a bridge we're just about ready to close on. Road right away for that. If you look at the second page, this would be the accomplishment year that I'm working on. We have a federally funded road resurfacing project, Bancroft Forest City Road, and then we're planning on doing those resurfacing projects, R fourteen, and there's a little one-mile stretch of road that is on the county line. We do not have any farm-to-market funds right now, remaining, we've pretty much spent everything there. So I was hoping that we would get these resurfaced using TIF money. And if the board would like, we could certainly throw in my priority year two map, the resurfacing there, if the board would like to borrow that money. If, if I do not get any indication of what the money is going to be, we're gonna be pretty much just the resurfacing project to do and I'll pick some other ones with funds that I know that are available.
I answered your question.
Sure.
With the different, with that TIF money, and say your local match, and I might not be wording this correctly, but is anything that's in that TIF, does that go towards that local match or?
Local effort.
Local effort or?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, okay, so that's, that is considered.
In fact, I think there's one county, what is it? A, a dare county is like six hundred some thousand, or six hundred sixty-six percent. They, they TIF and they do some really big construction projects. So their local effort is, is large.
Okay, well, can we digest all of this?
I think we're gonna have to.
And Doug, are you around next Tuesday? That wasn't a day you're going.
I will.
Okay, could we schedule a workshop then for next Tuesday?
I'll talk to him and see what he wants to.
For secondary roads again. Okay.
We'll put him on my schedule, whatever workshop.
All right, that would be, that'd be good.
Yeah, because that might present some questions I have about the TIF and, and what's in there and the money, which will, might go hand in hand with this. That might take a little bit.
So be thinking about the TIF and construction and the wages and, and all that, so, okay.
May I speak just quickly about the insurance fund?
Oh, sure.
The self-insured fund here is a brief statement of the condition of the self-insurance fund. So, our self-insurance fund is, it began July one of twenty twenty-five with a balance of two million, six hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. If you look at the, the December line, everything is completed on December, and you can see that we ended right here with a balance of two million, four hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. It's been a strange year. We have had, one month will be a small amount of claims, the next month will be a large amount of claims, and it's, it's never been consistent for whatever reason.
Can I hold you up for a second?
Yeah, sure.
I apologize to Kendall, too. Can you, just give me a two-minute or three-minute thing of how the whole thing works? About the whole, the self-insurance, can you, just to bring me a somewhat in the ballpark or what?
We have Wellmark, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they are our administrator. We have to pay them some administrative fees. And that's per policy, so that, basically, so that's a fixed rate. And right now, we have a seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss. So, we purchase insurance from Wellmark for anything over seventy-five thousand dollars.
Per person or per claim or?
Per person. And we have about three hundred thirty people that we, that are insured, three hundred twenty. And that's been varying too, because we've had a lot of.
So I know it, you don't have time.
And then Cassuth County takes care of all the claims lower. We pay Wellmark for those claims that are lower than that seventy-five thousand dollars.
Again, per person?
Correct.
So theoretically, I mean, if you just get wiped out in a, in a given year, if the.
There is a, what they, when they give, when they give us information, Howard, we'll see what their underwriters say will be what they, they would expect us to have.
Yeah.
And then they will have what they call a hundred twenty-five percent, which would be the maximum effect to the fund.
So there is a.
There, there is, yes.
So actuarially, they tell you what they expect, and if, but even if that gets blown out of the water, you have to stop there too.
We, we've never approached it.
I appreciate that, I.
That, that's in a nutshell, that's by no means, and when we start getting some rates.
That's long enough, go ahead.
We will, I have some more data to show.
Okay.
So anyway, right now, we are lower than what we started with. And I would assume, based on the year, I think we're probably going to be, right now, I think we're about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand lower than what we were beginning with. I would assume we're gonna be right at that two hundred to two hundred fifty thousand dollars lower with the balance. But we'll see what, what they come in with our claims. And then I'm just gonna hand this out. I'm not gonna speak at all. This is a, this is a confidential sheet. It's not identifying anyone, but with the cameras rolling, I refuse to speak about it. And we're gonna have to discuss when we start talking about self-insurance. I, I'm sorry, I just, I can't, because this is, these are some of our employees. And you'll see what the high, this is anybody that.
Some are in our high claims.
High claims, and I asked for, this is for this year, and it would be that have had fifty thousand dollars, greater than fifty thousand dollars of claims. From anybody out there, should be, is there a factor?
Yeah.
And if anyone would like to visit more about that, feel free to come to my office. And I watch the fund, Howard, Donna Nielsen. She makes sure people are enrolled or exchanges in enrollment. And Melissa Arndorfer, Tammy's office, they take care of making sure that contributions. It, it's a, it's a three, three-person effort to get that taken care of.
But when we talk about it and they present their spreadsheet and stuff, it, it explains a lot more, Howard, I think, and I think.
Yeah, they go through a executive summary.
Yeah, so it'll look a little bit.
Is this a current or recent report, or when was this?
This morning.
This, okay. Just curious, when was generated?
I don't know if that's on that or not, they.
Either way.
But it is, it's through November of twenty twenty-four. That's the latest data that I could pull. I couldn't get the seventy twenty twenty-four data yet.
Thank you for all that information, Doug, and we'll revisit it next Tuesday.
Is there any other information the board would like me to bring Tuesday?
Have you or Michelle been in contact about what quotes she's gonna drum to us or what?
As far as insurance, I got an email to Michelle I haven't received. As of right after lunch, I hadn't received anything back from Michelle. I would anticipate she will have that information soon.
Very good. Well, Kendall, we're all ready for ya.
Okay.
Conservation.
Okay, what I'm gonna do, actually, we have, I call it two budgets we have. We have our nature center budget and then we have our main budget. There's, they're different, um, departments, so we're gonna do the, the, uh, nature center budget first. You wanna just give everybody one of those, please?
Thank you.
Okay, what I have basically is just three years of numbers and data for you. The, the one to the right is the proposed, the middle one is the current fiscal year and then the one on the left, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Those are the, the past year with the actual numbers. The asking for twenty-five, twenty-six is basically the same as last year. Um, the only difference, I took out, um, the line item four, 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 which was the internet equipment of two hundred forty dollars. I did, I deleted that, so the asking, um, is thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. On the bottom there is the generate, our nature center revenues. That is the, um, meeting room rental that we receive. The top, um, column is the budgeted amount and then the column below that is the actual amount received. I didn't put, uh, the middle column, I put it zero just because we're not at the end of the year. There's obviously money that has, um, went into the, the meeting room revenues for twenty-four, twenty-five. I just don't put it in because the year hasn't been completed. And so I'm budgeting an additional, um, thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. Otherwise, very similar from last year.
Any questions for Kendall on nature center budget? Well, I guess if, if you wanna go over to the main budget, the main budget then, that'd be great.
Thank you, sir.
Something behind you?
Little bit.
Okay.
Little bit, yep.
Ten minutes, twenty minutes?
Yeah, ten minutes, probably fine. Unless Kendall's got some huge topics.
Okay, the, the budget that you're looking at, there'll be two pages similar to this.
Yep.
Um, this was what was, uh, presented when we had our December ninth board meeting, um, to our conservation board and this is what they approved, uh, to present to you folks. I know you've had these numbers, do you want me to go through down the line items or just explain where the differences are or how much detail do you want?
I'd say you had differences for sure, um, otherwise.
Okay, um, I will do that, we'll start with the green one or the orange one that has administration. Um, again, the right column would be the proposed. Um, looking at the, the difference in the first four columns have to do with the salary and I'll cover that information later. It's a six percent, um, salary increase. You'll notice under the health and dental, one thirteen, the decrease in that, um, that went from past year's family coverage to a single coverage. So that's why the difference, um, in that line item. Uh, the remaining line items under the administration, uh, were exactly the same as twenty-four, twenty-five. If you go under the blue column or the operations, again, the, the, uh, first lines are dedicated to the salary change and the FICA and the IFRS that go along with that. Again, a change in the health and dental. Um, the twenty-one, three thirty-one is two single coverages. Um, the year before we had, um, one family and one single. Uh, additional change in that line item under shop supplies, line item two oh one, went from eleven, one thirty-five to twenty-five thousand. The shop supplies is our main operations budget, that's not fixed, that covers like our contract mowing, covers our septic, um, system repair, covers a lot of things that come out of the shop supplies. It isn't just stuff that you would buy, you know, for our, you know, like, um, paper products or equipment, covers a lot of different things. The other addition down in four, four, four was new equipment. Uh, last year we had no line item for new equipment. Uh, this year we have ten thousand, um, budgeted for the new equipment line item. If you go to the next page, under education, which is highlighted in the yellow, the, uh, salaries are increased at six percent with the corresponding FICA and IFRS. Um, again, the dental in that one changed from two family to one family and one single coverage. Let's see, going down to the, um, resource and conservation reserve, the resource enhancement is the same as thirty thousand. The reserve jumped to two eighty-four. Uh, part of that is ongoing projects that we perceive we will need the money. One of them is if the grants come through for the Crayle acquisition, um, we would be spending that money out of the conservation reserve. That's why that figures higher. Um, camping or down into the income, the camping fees, same as the previous year. Um, pretty much the rental's the same. Uh, the reserve is, uh, up a little bit because we had some additional money we anticipate coming in there through reimbursements. If you go to the next page, um, or did, I'm sorry, does anybody have any questions on that before we go to the salary information?
No.
Okay, I have three pages of salary information. This, this one would be the first one to look at. This is the, the Cassuth County is part of the I, ICCS, which is Iowa's county conservation system. Um, and every year our CEO, uh, tabulates all the information on the one hundred counties within the state and comes up with this salary survey of all the, this is all the employees that are doing the same thing throughout the different counties in the state. And I highlighted the positions that match up with, uh, with our county positions. So it gives you what, what the average are, it also gives you some additional information range, average years, et cetera. If you go to the next page of that, it gives you a little bit more information on how our county employees are doing. These are the, the top five are full-time employees and then we also have, unfortunately, on the, some of the part-time ones, they don't have a, an average. But for instance, if you just look at one, the first one, director would be my position. This is the salary of seventy-three, nine, seventy-five, what the statewide average is. And I also included, um, I know in the, the comp board met, they, they talked about longevity or consistency within the system. If you look down within our, our years, other than we have one maintenance technician who will just complete two years. Um, this month, everybody else has been with the county and in their positions a long time. Quite a, it's really quite impressive that we were able to keep employees that long, um, within the system. So for that reason, I, I don't consider our employees average, I don't consider our county system that we have here average. It's far above that with the things that we do and, and the experience that we have. Um, the last page of that, um, I just gave you a breakdown of the six percent, which is also listed in the handout I prepared for Tammy, this is a breakdown of the different employees that are listed and what their salaries would be at the six percent increase.
Well, the only thing I would say, Kendall, is kind of, we've had this discussion with, I think, everyone that's come in. We're shooting for that four percent for budgetary purposes for the board until we, at least until we, uh, know where we're sitting and, uh, don't wanna make too many promises we can't keep or anything either, so.
Sure.
Um, but it's good to know where you're at, what, what the board's desire is there and, uh, yeah, we'll keep that in consideration, so.
Okay.
I would appreciate if you, if you do know anything. I'm in a little bit different situation than the department heads because I can't just have you call me and say, change the budget.
Yep, yep.
I have to take it to our, our conservation board and have them look at it and decide where they wanna cut it, how they wanna cut it, so.
Yep.
Fortunately, I don't know if that's gonna help you, our next meeting's next Monday, the thirteenth, but if you don't know by then.
You meet every month, right?
We meet every month, so we have to wait till February meeting or if you needed it before that, I'd have to call a special meeting.
Sure, sure. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kendall. Any questions for Kendall, I guess, great.
But I need to change his numbers to four percent, correct?
I would, I would at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, what's that?
That's been the message to everybody.
I need to change your numbers to four percent.
Is that what you're requesting our board do?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, the board is, what the board is requesting Tammy to do.
Okay.
At, at this time is to change the number to four percent.
Okay, cause typically, uh, your board tells our board to reduce the budget by a dollar amount and they decide where they wanna do that. So I guess you could figure that out and let me know, Tammy.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the bottom line, I guess it's figured here, but we'd really appreciate that, um, cooperation.
Okay.
Just because we're trying to maintain fairness and consistency and.
I will, I will bring that, I will bring that to them. I'll bring it to them, that's where, yeah, but they have the final decision. So I guess we need to know a dollar amount too, but you're not that far yet because you're still going through budgets.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's.
We're not that far in knowing if that's what we have to do, but you know, if Tammy changed that, she would, she would be able to give you that new dollar amount.
Right. Well, appreciate it and.
Yep.
We'll talk to you then soon.
Let them know and I guess I'll hear back from me through you or Tammy.
Sounds good.
How far in the process are you? You've been through half of the year?
This is our first day, I've. We're making decent progress, yeah, probably half of it, maybe half, yeah.
Okay.
Half of, half of half of the equation, only twenty-five percent.
All right, thank you guys.
Yep, thanks Kendall, have a good day.
How you doing?
There's Phil.
Am I next?
Nope.
The sheriff is next, so.
Okay.
He, he was coming back in ten minutes, probably ten minutes ago.
I gotta meet with Derek anyway, so I'll just get through, that's all right.
Sounds good.
I gotta get the rest turned.
Yeah, I should probably get to you.
I did the math quick on the years because it was highlighted on the front, the statewide average is eleven point five years. Our average is twelve point five, six, two, five right now. So we're.
We're not too far.
Tied right in there. It's exciting, isn't it? Again, I, I'm, I'm sure I didn't hear what I hear right, but, uh, and I realized that we're, yeah, we're ready.
Must be on a break?
Yeah, a couple of minutes, feel free to come on in.
How's Roger today?
Good, how are you guys?
Not too bad.
Do you have budget sheets for us? I think Tammy said she didn't have any.
I, a couple, three weeks ago, I submitted the one to her, that's the only thing I have, so.
Oh.
Whatever she sent you, man. She didn't give you nothing?
No, we have nothing. I think that might have got, I don't know if that got lost in the shuffle or.
Back at the center when she requested them, um, by the eighteenth is when I submitted it.
Okay.
No, I don't have anything filled out for wages.
Well, yeah, that's understandable.
So should I quick go make copies?
Uh, Tammy.
Do you have the one from the eighteenth when I sent to you?
Without the wages?
Yes, that's the one I have. We're gonna talk about that today, wages.
Yeah, well, nothing's been entered because.
Right, so they don't have paper copies of this though?
They have blank ones, no paper copies, it's in there. But they don't have the other numbers, they don't have.
Yeah, if you have anything else, we wouldn't have that.
Uh, maybe.
Well, I don't have anything else.
I mean, I get, do you want paper copies? I hate to make too many copies of all this, so we're gonna have to change it. I can send you, I'll email you this one without the wages and stuff.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so he doesn't have his wages, so I am going to email you what he sent. Um, it just has the line items without any wages on it, that's all we got. And I'll, I'll email that to you guys now.
I don't know what it is about these lights, but if I sit in here all day, I think it'll blow your head.
These chairs are not my best friend, I know that, I'm gonna bystander for a minute.
I cannot read Doug's spreadsheet, the one color was making my eyes all kinds of crazy.
Two little numbers.
Yeah.
And you gotta know that, the beginning and end and that.
I need a ruler, I think, okay, can we put that on the list?
Yes, I can get you a ruler. I can get you that.
Is that my partner?
No.
You're a dork.
She gave too much. No, it's not letting me do it, I gotta go to my other. No, it's not letting me do it, I gotta go to my other computer and try to get that.
Tammy, go ahead Tammy. Seven counties, we are aware, we have a ten fifty on the county line, two thirtieth street and three fortyth avenue. No injuries reported at the time, the one vehicle is empty, bitch on its top, no attachment. Again, ten fifty at two thirtieth street and three fortyth avenue. Yeah, Mark, you need a system, can't let it go, no kind of curve for ten percent. And Mark. Did you get it?
Email from you?
Not gotten anything yet.
Oh, yeah. Hasn't popped in on the computer.
It says invite sent, nothing.
Otherwise Roger, if you want to start talking, we can just talk and.
You don't have an email?
We do not have anything at the moment.
She, she's working on getting stuff.
I think it was around December seventeenth or eighteen.
She has the email, she's just.
Yeah, I'm trying to forward the basic budget to them, cause what they have now is just blank.
Perfect, okay.
Because you don't have any wages in it.
No, I don't, not explaining to you why, here in just a second. Can you start with Roger?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Good afternoon, everybody, full disclosure, um, as you know, I'm here representing the sheriff's office as an elected official. Gonna go over our budget with you this morning. Um, I thought it would be beneficial, especially for the two new board members, to show you how my budget is broke down every year. So this just gives you an idea what comes on where and how much we need for each part of it. I didn't send this to you because I just did it today, so.
Thank you.
Perfect. So if you allow me just a few minutes to explain that, as you can see, our sheriff's office has twenty-six employees, coming myself, eleven are certified patrol, thirteen are certified corrections, and then two office staff. Our budget in the current year is three million, five hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars. About thirty-two percent of that is for the uniform patrol division, which is our certified deputies, all the equipment and training required, meeting expenses. That comes about one point one three four million. About forty percent of our budget is the adult corrections, which is the operation of the jail. That includes, uh, one administrator and twelve certified jail staff, inmate care trainings, and I can break that down further when we go through line items, but that's about one point four million of the budget. Sixteen percent is administrative, um, meeting and myself, first deputy, two office staff, and then a lot of the building maintenance and those type of line items are included in that, that's five hundred seventy-seven thousand. And then four percent of the budget is our law enforcement center, county share of the communication center, which currently is budgeted at one hundred seventy-two thousand. And then eight percent is motor vehicle, which is about three hundred thousand. I rounded these numbers, but that equals a hundred percent. Ninety-two percent of that approximately, three point two nine million, comes out of the general basic fund, and eight percent of the three hundred thousand comes out of the rural services fund. I think this year, uh, the estimated public safety budget will fall in that seventeen to nineteen percent of the total county budget. I'm not sure, but that's what it has been in the past in that neighborhood. And the Cassuth County Sheriff's budget is about thirteen to fifteen percent of the total Cassuth County budget. So when you figure all of your expenditures for the year, our sheriff's office budget will fall somewhere in that thirteen to fifteen percent range. So I apologize, I didn't get you a full line item budget with, uh, printed out and everything, but the reason for that is because I was just notified, just got an email that the deputies are joining a union, and I'm gonna give that to you Carter, because I was just notified that they're in the process of, what's it called, the advisory, Iowa Appeal something?
Iowa Blamen Appeal Board.
They're waiting for that notification, so they will be represented by fraternal order police, so I'm not gonna be negotiating their wages this year. Uh, they'll have representation and probably work on that here in the next month or two, I would think, so. I'm not sure how long the waiting period is, you guys might have more, better knowledge of that than I am.
We need it done by March first.
Yeah, do you know any sort of timeline of what?
I emailed him back to give him an estimate of time, I have not heard back yet, so.
Okay.
Um, I heard the rumor of forty-five days, I don't know when that started, I was just notified, I think that was dated yesterday Carter?
Uh, January sixth, yep, yep.
Yeah.
That's when I got the email, but I was, I kinda had a heads up on the way back last middle of December or so, uh, that it was in the works.
Will that include the jailers too, Roger?
No, as of right now, it's just the certified deputies.
Okay.
Does not include the jail staff. Okay, so, um, I did not submit a budget with wages and all that because last year I felt like I went through that two or three times and it ended up being a zero percent anyway, so this year I decided I would submit the wages as soon as we have a discussion today. I've got them all figured out, uh, from anywhere from zero to ten percent. So it won't take me long to fill in the blanks and resubmit it down the road whenever you guys are ready. So, um, I'm leaving the patrol deputies blank, as you can see on page one, that's seven hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven. Um, everything else on my budget is staying the same, um, ten thousand for other. Down under the general basic for, uh, uniforms, twenty-eight thousand is staying the same, miscellaneous, eleven thousand is staying the same. Under meetings and mileage at eighteen thousand, that's staying the same. You're gonna notice that it's going way over this year, and that's because of the hiring incentive that we had to do, and that twenty-two thousand was taken out of that line item, but we'll be okay in the group, it's just that it looks like it's going way over on that part. Um, but we're gonna keep that the same at eighteen thousand. K nine is the same at fifteen, uh, motor vehicle got moved to rural, rural services. Uh, criminal investigations, further down the page is a foul, and that's staying the same. Law enforcement center negotiating, I think Carter or Kyle and who else said in on that, I can't remember now, Josh, was that you? Said on that negotiations?
Yeah, we said it separately.
And so far, um, have not heard anything back from the city as far as, uh, the business agreement that they were supposed to work on. Um, our share, if that goes through, our share would be a hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred seventy-seven. Um, but as I said, as of today, there hasn't been anything back to me anyway, as far as, uh.
Yeah, I think Derek was in the same boat.
If they're gonna enter into a business agreement and look at, uh, changing those costs because of, including EMS. Um, but our current budget has a hundred seventy-two, if they negotiate that new percentage, it'd be one eighty-two, so it'd go up about ten thousand. Um, I'm still, now I'm under adult correctional services. Jailers, I've not put anything in there yet, I'm waiting to hear what, uh, we're, we're gonna talk about wages here in a little bit. Um, otherwise, everything else in that line item stays the same. The hundred thousand for basic food services, that's an estimate, but, um, we average, that's, you can look at the history there, it's eighty-five, one year is eighty-seven, another one eighty-five. We're already at thirty percent, um, that's gonna be pretty close to being the same. Depending on our, uh, inmates and how many we bring in. Um, if you are curious, we averaged three hundred and thirty-nine bookings last year. Uh, the average daily population of our inmates is right around twelve per day, and our meal costs are sixteen dollars per inmate for two meals and five dollars per inmate for, uh, breakfast meal. So about twenty-one dollars a day per inmate, uh, for our meal cost, for the food division. Institutional supplies, um, I did raise that up to forty-five, it has been at forty. Look at the history, it's averaged forty-five and fifty-four. Um, it doesn't matter, if you want to keep it at forty, we still should be okay in the group, I just raised it to forty-five because of the past two years. That's the only increase I have, uh, thus far is, is, uh, institutional supplies up five thousand. Uh, meetings and mileage will stay the same at eight thousand. Fuel costs stay the same at forty-five thousand. Building repair maintenance stay the same at twelve thousand. Uh, under administration, I have not put my salary in there yet, or chief deputy. Um, actually, I call it first deputy, not chief deputy, and he's the only employee at the sheriff's office whose salary is based off of mine. Um, the other help stays the same at two thousand. Continuing on under administration, um, supplies will stay the same at eighteen thousand. Postures the same at sixteen hundred. Meeting and mileage is the same at four thousand, telephone the same at fifteen. Um, building repair maintenance fifty thousand. I'll stop there and, and explain to you what's going on at the jail. We have approximately fifty-five to sixty electronic locks that are now twenty-five years old, twenty-four, twenty-five years old, and they're starting to fail. And they average about fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred dollars apiece to replace them. So what I'm gonna try to look at doing is maybe doing ten or twelve a year over the next few years out of that line item. Um, just simply because, um, I think Ron can replace them for the manuals or labor part of it, but the cost of them is gonna run probably around eighteen hundred dollars apiece to replace it. And that's just from wear and tear of twenty-four years of being pushed electronically and opening and closing, and they're just starting to wear out. Um, contingency phone is the same, twenty thousand. Radio expense, the same at five thousand, program the same at ten thousand. Um, shield wear program the same at five thousand. So that's just a real quick rundown of, of, uh, the expensive side of it. And as I said, I did not include anything on wages, I have everything figured out. If you want estimates for your own knowledge on what we're looking at. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of history here so that when we start talking about this, especially for the two new board members. Um, I didn't bring in any comparables today, I mean, I know the comp board did it for comparables on the elected officials. Um, I do have about probably somewhere from twelve to fifteen comparables on sheriff's office for deputies and jailers. I didn't bring that with me today, but I just wanted you to know that the last time our jail staff and deputy staff received a raise would have been in July of two thousand twenty-three. The next possibility of getting a raise won't be until July of two thousand twenty-five. That'll be a two-year span that they've not, uh, had, uh, even a cost of living raise. And last year with the, uh, the board approving the health insurance cost of two hundred fifty dollars for family policies, that was a three thousand dollar loss of income. And most of them also had an increased out-of-pocket expenses of another fifteen hundred. So it'd be about forty-five hundred dollars in loss of income. I believe the cost of living last, this current was three point two percent. For the average employee, that's a little over two thousand dollars. So our jail, our deputies took a hit of about six thousand eight hundred dollars, and our jailers took a hit of about six thousand two hundred, in what I would consider to be a loss of income because of the one year being hit with not only an insurance premium cost out of your pocket, but also the zero percent of the cost of living raises. And I think the only reason I want to bring that up to you is because I, I don't think it's, uh, fair and impartial when part of our employees get a four percent raise and the rest of them got zero. And if you guys remember right, last year, you went through all the amendments and processes and everything, and every entity in the county ended up, uh, recovering what was cut, except for county employees. Uh, and as I mentioned, the road department was at an eight percent, four percent, four percent. But our, our employees on the sheriff's side, uh, had a zero percent plus the loss of the, with the health insurance increase on premiums. And I only bring that up because I'm not representing the entire county, I don't represent all of the employees in the county, but I do represent public officials, or excuse me, public safety. I'm also an elected official, it's my job to perform all the public safety for the county. And if we don't keep ourselves comparable and competitive, you guys are gonna be looking for people every year. And I want, just also want to let you know that I am the only employee left that started here in the nineteen hundreds. Every other one of our employees started after the year two thousand. And I think we're gonna see a trend where we're gonna have an overturn of employees because if we don't stay comparable, competitive in this market, and, and I know I sound like I'm preaching here, but I think what I want you to remember, and the reason I gave you that sheet, if you notice on the bottom of the page, we are thirteen to fifteen percent of the county budget, but we're the only county entity that's open three hundred sixty-five days a year. And we've gotta house that jail, and we've gotta be able to respond to emergency calls every day of the year. And it's, it's, I think you've noticed since I became sheriff, we've had to, an overturn of, uh, we have eleven positions, fifty-five one through fifty-five eleven, and fifty-five four is our cutoff. And what I mean by that is fifty-five five through eleven have been replaced in the last three and a half years. So that's what, seven employees, just on the certified deputy side of it, that we've had to replace. And we're gonna have that same issue on the jail side of it, I'm not gonna discriminate against anybody or bring up names. But out of our twelve certified jailers, we have probably about six that are gonna be eligible for retirement within this next few months to few years. Uh, matter of fact, we are advertising right now, we've got a female jailer that's retiring in March. We have another male jailer that's advised us that he may be leaving employment in March. Um, and then we have another one that is, uh, thinking about retirement yet this year. So I bring all that up to you stating that if we don't stay competitive and comparable, we're not gonna get applications. And as those of you that were here all the entire year, um, Amber and Howard may not be aware of this, but when we started the process last spring, it took us from April until December to fill three positions, and we were four deputies short for eight months out of the year. Three of them, two left, uh, because of, uh, other employment, one retired, another one fractured his wrist doing his job, and we were four short, it took us that long to go through that process. Understanding that in Iowa, in order for me to hire deputy sheriff, they have to apply, meet the standards of civil service, they have to pass the testing, both written and physical, in order to get on the list. If they don't make it on the list, I can't hire them. So our current, uh, civil service list has one name on it, and that person's not eligible for employment. So if we were to have to seek employment further down the road for our certified deputies, we would have to start that process over again. And I can predict that we'll probably be in the same boat where we won't get a full list of ten. Um, little history, we had fourteen applicants, only seven passed, and out of those seven, only three became eligible um, for consideration, and we ended up hiring two of those three. The third one was red flagged out, and then we had to start the process over to get our, our third additional deputy, that we just hired in December. So that's just a little bit of history on it, and I wanted to educate you a little bit on why it's so important we stay competitive and comparable. Um, I, I know that we always hear about making sure we, um, treat all of our county employees fairly and equally, and I agree. But we also have to look at job descriptions and job responsibilities and duties. Um, and as the sheriff, I, um, I, I see Phil's in the back room, I have the same issue that Phil has. We have to fill staffs and fill shifts every day. When everybody goes home at four o'clock, we're still in fish, filling shifts throughout the evening, throughout the weekends and holidays. And, uh, it's, it's getting to be difficult to do when they can look right next door and see that the incomes are considerably higher for the same positions. So having said that, um, I won't be able to give you an idea of what we should do for the patrol, patrol deputies now that they've, uh, decided to form a union. Um, but I would tell you that for the jail staff and, uh, office staff, it would take an average of eight to ten percent just to regain what they've lost in this last year. That would just bring them back to what they lost in the last year. And I say that because of the forty-five hundred dollar in health insurance, three thousand for premiums and fifteen hundred for out-of-pocket, and the loss of the, even the cost of living, which the county road received, but the other employees did not. If I factor in all that, it would be an average of about eight to ten percent. Depending on what's, uh, job description or whether they're a jailer or a deputy or office staff, it would take about eight to It would take about eight to ten percent just to get them to come even from the last year. That's not including any of the cost of living for this coming year or anything like that. So I would gladly fill in the blanks and submit it. I can submit it to Tammy within the next day or two if you'd like, but I need to know where we're going to start because I'm going to speak honestly and openly. I'm not going to do it like last year and then all of a sudden I get an email that says we're going to zero percent. If that's your intention this year, I'd like to know now. If we're looking at zero percent, then I'll submit it at zero percent. But if we're looking at a fair and marketable percentage for our jailers and office staff, I'll submit that.
What person, when you figure your first deputy, like is he a percentage of you?
Yes, he's the only employee across the street that is, his pay is based off of my salary.
What percentage is he?
By law, I could put him at eighty five percent. He's only at seventy two percent.
Seventy two percent?
Yes, of my wage.
Is that what you were going to keep him at?
Yes, just at seventy two percent. I already lowered him from seventy five to seventy two about a year ago. We took it down three percent just to keep it comparable to the deputies. Because I don't feel it's fair that a first deputy makes fifteen to twenty thousand more than a deputy sheriff. When his only other administrative duties is to help me with the schedule and administrative duties of policies and procedures. But we're trying to not separate it so much. Right now, our base pay for deputies is a, and I'm going to just give you round figures, I don't have the exact number, about seventy two thousand per deputy.
Yeah.
And, yep, so that's about an average for the base pay of deputies. I also budget overtime and holidays. As you guys know, the employees get eleven holidays per year. And because our deputies and jailers are required to work on holidays, we've got a budget for overtime rate for that, depending on what they work. I'd say an average of about probably eighty to a hundred thousand for our deputies is what I budget for overtime and a little less than that for our jail staff. And that's just simply because we don't know what's going to expect, what's going to happen, what kind of emergencies we're going to face. You know, how many shifts we're going to have to fill. As I just mentioned, we had a tough hit in two thousand twenty four where we had about an eight month period where we paid a lot of overtime because we were four deputies short. Myself and my first deputy tried to fill in some shifts, but it gets to the point where it's a, it's a safety factor when I only have one deputy out and we try to make sure we have a minimum of two out per shift. Sometimes that doesn't always work out, but we try to make sure that's a minimum. The jail staff, just so maybe Howard and Amber are aware of this, I'm required by federal and state law, I have to have one male and one female staff member inside the building at all times. They cannot leave the jail. So if we have a transport or we got to go pick up meals, we've got to make sure we maintain one male, female inside the building and then a third person can leave the building either for picking up meals or going to the hospital, depending on if we have a mental health commitment or if we have something going on. Perhaps an inmate has a doctor appointment, so we have to have somebody available for that. And then we utilize deputies if we don't have a jail staff to do transports or mental health court commitments. So just so you're aware, I have to make sure that there's a male and female in the building at all times. That's just because of federal laws that if we house female inmates, we have to have a female staff in the building. For example, right now, I'll give you an example. I have a female jailer working today, but she's on a transport dispenser on a mental health. And so Bailey, my administrator, is working the jail right now because we have to have a female in there at all times. So I know there's a lot of complication that sometimes the general public doesn't understand what some of the requirements are. But that's a federal and state mandate. If you're going to operate a correctional facility, you must have the proper staff on duty at all times. And that's one of my concerns, why I'm bringing it up to you about being comparable and competitive because we can't discriminate, but I have to have six female jailers and I have to have six bail jailers. And right now, we're just, we're publicating right now for a position and we're not getting any applications. And I got to keep my fingers crossed that we get female applications. And if we don't, we're going to be in a situation where we either have to pay overtime for our current staff to fill those shifts or we'll just have to keep searching and looking for somebody to come in and perform those duties. As you saw in that sheet I handed you, about one point four million of our budget is jail. And just to educate you a little more, I know I've had people come up to me and say, why don't you just close the jail? Well, we could, we could close the jail, but you're not going to save any money because then you're going to be transporting inmates every day. You're going to be transporting them back and forth to another county. You're going to be transporting them over here for court, doctor appointments. Even if we keep them in another facility, Cassuth County is still responsible for the transportation of those inmates, the care of those inmates, the medical cost of those inmates. And depending on the fee, it could be anywhere from fifty five to seventy five dollars per day, per inmate to house them in another facility. So if you do the math, you're going to probably end up spending just as much, if not more, out of your budget if you, if you close the doors of the jail. And that's why sheriffs have never looked at that as far as what the expenses are going to be. Any questions on that or?
I actually just did the math that you kind of talked about there to see what our cost per day is per, and you said averaging twelve per day, so that's what I figured.
That's where our average was last year, twelve.
So that comes out to three hundred and twenty one dollars per day per person.
I don't know what all you put in there, but all I gave you was food.
No, that's the one point four million.
Right.
Other correctional services for the whole jail.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I don't know what, you know, if you came to me and said, hey, we got to do a cut, in my overall budget, about seventy two to eighty percent. You can do the math if you want, but about close to eighty percent of our budget is employees. And that's employees that we need to operate the public safety. You could tell me, well, let's cut some employees. Well, at some point, then we're going to have to cut services. And that's why I remember last year when we were going through all these budget hearings, we had the gentleman in the back room, made a big deal and I said, well, we might have to close the doors at eight P M. He thought I was joking. If I only have one deputy out, it's a safety factor if they know they don't have backup in situations. In the last month, guys, I had deputies that faced a person that slit their throat. And I've had deputies that faced a situation with a guy with a loaded gun in a handbag, two feet from him, threatening suicide by cop. I only tell you that stuff because it's hard to find people to work in these positions. Young people don't want to get into this position anymore. And even if they do, they're going to look at where they can make a lot more money rather than come here and make a lot less. And I'm not, I'm not saying that we got to give them an extravagant raise, but we can't keep doing zero percent. We're going to be in big trouble. You know, I'm only here for four more years. I've already made that decision, four years, I'm out of here. And then you're going to have every employee at the sheriff's office that started here after the year two thousand. I don't want to, I have one jail that started in nineteen ninety nine, so I won't exclude him, but everybody else is well after two thousand. So it's just, that's why, you know, I'm going to be quite frank and honest with you. That's why I left my budget blank. I'm going to fill it out after I've had a chance to talk to you. I've talked to other sheriffs that have done their budgets in December already and that's what they've told me is they go and talk to you guys first, get an idea of where we're at, then they put their budget together. It's hard for any department head to put a budget together if you don't know if we're looking at zero percent or five percent or ten percent of what we're looking at. But I've got it all figured out right here, whatever we decide on. It doesn't have to be today, but whoever decides on it, it's just a matter of me putting the numbers in and emailing it to Tammy. Because I've got every line item filled in with no raises except for, I've left them all blank on the wages and FICA and IFRS and health insurance until we figure that out. The only increase I said was at five thousand and that's, that's up to you guys. If we leave it the same, that's fine, we'll be okay in the group. I just noticed that that one's been consistently over for the last two years. Can't remember what line item that was, it went from forty to forty five. Otherwise, I didn't increase anything else. Motor vehicles, just so you know, it's now an average of about seventy five thousand dollars to put together a patrol vehicle. The state bid on them is right now currently fifty one thousand. Doesn't matter if you get a Tahoe or a pickup or what you look at, they're all about fifty one thousand on the state bid. And then it's about another approximately eighteen to twenty thousand to set them up with equipment. And, and that's no fault of anybody other than the courts. The courts say that you have to have video and you have to have body cameras and you have to have all this to provide evidence. Each deputy is equipped with a tuck book, which requires a docking station and Sierra box and GPS and internet access. So when you put all that equipment into one vehicle, you're looking at about seventy to seventy five thousand per vehicle. We try to do two per year to keep our, we have fourteen vehicles in our fleet. Eleven are for patrol officers, one for jail, that's twelve. And then we have two backup reserve trucks. Both of them are trucks that have a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand miles on them, but we have to keep them. For example, right now, we are using both of our reserve trucks because I've got one that got hit by the manure applicator. Still not fixed, it's still in the shop. I've got another one that's needing repairs on the other side of, driver's side of it. And I've got a brand new vehicle that we purchased, you guys approved that we purchased, that's still waiting to get uplifted and set up. Hopefully, we'll have it by February. So we always have to have a reserve just simply because we never know what vehicles are going to go down and what we do for it. That three hundred thousand a year purchases, two vehicles a year. And then the other half that goes for fuel costs, maintenance costs, repair costs, services cost. And that's what it averages out per year. I don't feel that we have to increase it, but I definitely don't want to decrease it because of the cost. There is an option now for law enforcement vehicles, we can lease vehicles. I don't know if that's something that our auditor wants us to get into or if you guys as a board, but you can now lease a patrol car fully uplifted and completely turnkey, ready to go, you go pick it up and then you pay so much per year. Basically, what they do is they take the total cost of fixing it up. Let's say it's seventy thousand dollars and you lease it for four years, they divide that by four. You pay a payment each year for that four years and at the end, you have the option to give it back or buy it and trade it in. I've not looked into it because I don't know how we would do that with rotating cars as many as we have to rotate. I'm just not sure if it'd be feasible or not. But it is an option. If you want me to look into it, I will, but it's just a brand new program that they came out with on government good vehicles for law enforcement. Other than that, unless you have any other questions about the budget. The only other thing I was going to mention under your decision for elected officials, I did not, was not able to come over here when Tom presented to you, but I did listen to your meeting with him. And I know you guys had mentioned something about you still have the ability to make decisions on raising or lowering that recommendation. Is that a new law that I'm not aware of or is there a new section that came out that I'm not aware of?
For the compensation.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that was changed last year when we went through the process to reestablish it. It was because the state law that was passed basically wiped it out and said, counties, you have the option to do it. And it changed the requirements and flexibility and all that.
The counties have the option of keeping our compensation.
Yes, but then you can also go above and below and you can move them independently.
Where can I find that? Because I can't find it anywhere.
Yeah, I.
It's, it's the actual text of the bill. I don't think they've updated the code section very.
Well, the updated one that I just got from ISSDA is chapters three, three thirty one, nine oh five and nine oh seven. I emailed that to you guys last week. Nine oh five, nine oh seven talks about how the county can dispose the comp board if they want. If they do, then it falls on the board to make that decision. But nine oh seven states that if you're going to reduce elected officials, the only one you can reduce is if they're part time. Otherwise, it says that.
No, not, not reducing, not like taking your salary today and making it lower. That would be a reduction in your salary. We're talking reduction in the.
Reduction in the compensation schedule.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's why, if you've got something that I'm not aware of, I'd like to be able to know where to look for it and find it.
Yeah, Tom gave it out at the compensation board meeting or it was in that stuff that he gave out, but I have it in my office too.
I'll pick it up for you because obviously it's different from what I got from the association.
So like talking about a reduction when Todd went and just picking on Todd since he's in the back of the room, when he went from full time to part time, that's when you can make a reduction in the actual base salary, not the proposed increase. They could have proposed a fifty percent increase and we could do a reduction or increase to the suggested change, but the base salary is probably the section you're reading.
Well, that's what I need to look at because what the state association is saying is that that's the reason for the law change is that a change from the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors being able to may reduce or excuse me, may accept the recommendation for sheriff of the back of the blue now says shall. And that you can only reduce that, that compensation recommendation if it's reduced to a part time position. And that's what I'm reading and that's why I need to find out what you have because obviously it's different from what got submitted to me.
Yeah, so the.
So I'll pick up a copy of that from you.
The may and shall stuff that was talked about at the compensation, and it was talked about this time, it was talked about the last two years, I think. That was a change in what the compensation board is supposed to set the recommendation at. So they are supposed to recommend based on those criteria.
Correct.
A board's decision is independent of that recommendation.
Right.
So.
And we have to take into consideration our fund balances and our taxes and the fact that we're not able to get much more anymore based on valuation, we're capped. So I, you know, we have to have say in it because I think that we would probably go broke very quickly if we took, had to take the recommendation, you know, at as high as it could be. And a lot of counties would be in the same boat. I mean, we, you have to look at your own finances.
Yes, and that's completely understandable. And I hope you look at the history of the sheriff's office for the last four years. We've averaged a ten percent return on ending fund balance. So looking at that, I think it was four hundred and thirty thousand return last year on the three point five million dollar budget or three point six, whatever it was. But we do have the funding available and the reason that we have that ten percent cushion because I feel it's my job as elected official because I can't predict what's going to happen in this upcoming year. I can't predict, nor can no better than Tom, can predict what his caseload is going to be or what we're going to be looking at, if we're going to have to, you know, have an increase of high profile type crimes or we're going to have to bring out extra people or, you know, have extra expenses involved in it. But then knowing at the end of that year, hopefully, we've got that ten percent cushion. And that's what we have averaged every year since I've been sheriff, is we've averaged about a ten percent return on our ending fund balance. And keep in mind, we're, we're less than fifteen percent of your overall budget. Less than fifteen percent, but we operate three hundred sixty five days a year. So I hope you keep that in mind as well. Have you got any numbers in mind of what you're looking at for employees for this year that I can budget in there?
Well, as, as we've told, I thought every department head that came in, we're at four percent is the number. With, with the exception of, of your salary, which was at seven percent, the sheriff's salary. And we've been sticking with that four percent number to be consistent and for the purposes of budgeting and see where we're at after we get through all the budget workshops here.
So is there any consideration for the employees that were at zero percent last year? To have a little bit of an increase this year to make up for what they lost? Or are you talking four percent for all county employees, including the road department again? Because they're under contract, I understand.
So it would be consistent with the road department this year, yes, yeah.
So we're looking at four percent, the state considers it the road department, but we're not looking at anything to make up for a whammy that they took last year on both health insurance increase and loss of wages for not even the cost of living.
It's nothing saying that we're not taking that into consideration. We're trying to find a number that might be fair enough that we can work with and knowing that we've got enough money to do that. Just because we gave zero percent last year doesn't mean we have double the money this year to, to do that. You can't go backwards. We have to base it upon the numbers that we're going to do for everyone's budget. We're trying to stay consistent. We're going to look at it, if our fund balances are good, we will probably have further discussion. But right now, we're just kind of looking at hoping that we can stick with that four percent. Last year, we were saying we were broke, so.
What did our any fund balance end up being June thirtieth?
I don't have it in front of me, I had asked, but.
Somewhere between six to seven million, I believe, in that neighborhood?
No, not on a general basis, no, uh-uh, no. It's never that high.
No.
But you always also have to have that, you have to have some cushion in that fund balance as well because you don't know what legislature is going to do down the road. I mean, we're trying at the same time to protect everybody as well, you know, and, and yeah, I get it. I get that they didn't.
I understand, I understand your job and duty as elected official, but I'm also elected official. And I think the people of this county want to know that I'm fighting for public safety that's going to be reasonable, respectable and be able to maintain good employees. And I'm telling you that the future of Cassuth County is going to start going rapidly downhill if we don't do it. We're already seeing it. We saw how difficult it was the past eight months and I think it's going to get even worse.
So, and, and I'm not saying I disagree with. So, i- and, and I'm not saying I disagree with you, but, you know, the scary part of the, every situation when you do that and give big increases is the sustainability of it. Like, in, in just thinking of the scope of now, I think our job also is to think, okay, what about next year? I mean, we have to know that what we decide in this room is sustainable. Doesn't mean we don't think that every, we'd probably love to give everybody a ten percent increase. Um, but we gotta base it off of the fund balance, and we gotta start somewhere. And right now, that's where we're thinking is a fair place to start.
And I agree, but we also have taken into consideration to taxpayers, is what's sustainable for what type of a service do you want provided? Because I'm telling you as an elective official, our services are gonna deteriorate rapidly if we can't find good employees. And we've already seen that, like I said, seven in the last three and a half years, and I'm looking at what we're gonna be able to do for our jail side of it, um, 'cause we know we're facing some, uh, uh, decisions on retirement in the very near future, and I don't know what we'll face on the certified deputy side of it. We don't have anybody on the list to hire right now. I wish I could just go ahead with the process and get some people on the list, but I can't till there's an opening. But I just wanted to make sure I educated you guys on our side of it, of where we're looking at. And the reason I didn't fill in any wages yet, is I wanted to have this conversation. If we're looking at a four percent, I'll, uh, do the numbers on a four percent, and submit it to Tammy, and then hopefully we can have further discussion down the road, when we, uh, have a better idea where the budget's gonna come in at.
Guess maybe something we can talk about as board and with Roger right now is, do we apply the four percent to jail staff, or do we apply seven percent with, to match up with the sheriff's percentage? So that we're, um, knowing what we're looking at, I guess. I mean, are we trying to replicate that percentage over the whole department, or just over sheriff? And, I mean, the deputies with the union kinda takes that out of the equation, but within this same department, which percentage are we looking at?
We still have to put something in for the deputies. I mean, we, because without that, we, we can't decide how much money we have, so we're, we're gonna have to put something. We have to put something in, we have to tell him what to put in, so we know what we're working with, first case that we're.
If they don't have anyone for forty-five days, I don't know that that's gonna be manageable either.
No, we're probably gonna have these.
Do you know what the guidelines are? I have no idea.
Nope, no, no.
I know they filed it, I just don't know what the guidelines are, and what, if we have to. I mean, I don't know if you have to get an official notification, I got an email, so, I don't know.
We don't, we don't know.
I can give you ballpark ideas of just what, what I have in the chart right here, but, um, for the deputies, if you look at a four percent, um, it's an increase of, this is just ballpark, it's an increase of about, uh,
Employee?
Thirty-seven thousand for the group, the entire group.
At four percent?
Yep, four percent would take it from seven hundred and eighty-two thousand to eight hundred and eighteen, nine nineteen. And then if you do the same for the jailers.
Can you give us a figure for seven percent for the deputies?
Yep, I've got it from zero to ten.
Yep, I knew you said that.
Uh, what percent?
Seven.
Seven percent for the deputies would raise that group. Seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven would raise it to eight forty-two, four sixty-three.
What is the change there? You said thirty-seven thousand for four percent.
Yep, and fifty-nine seven, fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred for seven percent.
If you wanna give us the jail totals, and then we've got.
I can give you every division if you want. Jailers, um, if you look right now, their current, the current group for jailers is seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-two. If you look at a four percent, it would raise it thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and six.
If you look at.
Yeah, I gotta hold you up here, something's not computing.
Yeah.
Seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, four percent's gonna give you a thirty thousand dollar.
Thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and six dollars is what he just said.
I know what he just said, I'm saying, that does not compute.
Okay, yep, yep.
What?
Cause ten percent is seventy thousand.
Right.
Four percent, seven hundred and fifty thousand is, is thirty thousand dollars.
Four percent.
Twenty-nine thousand nine.
Fifty-two percent would be seventy-four, so five percent would be thirty-six.
Twenty, twenty-nine thousand is what I have for four percent.
Twenty-nine nine two.
And that does not include the admin, jail administrator, though. That's, that's seven forty-eight, five sixty-two times four percent.
But keep in mind for jail staff, I have to figure overtime built into their schedule.
But you would've had that for the current budget?
Yep, and also I'd be including, and this is also including holiday and overtime. This isn't just a base pay, it's holiday and overtime also.
Right, but you would've had that in this current budget, the same figures.
Correct, correct, seven forty-eight is the group.
Yeah.
So, four percent of that would be twenty-nine, nine forty-two, forty-eight.
Yeah, that's what I came up with.
So, that would be thirty thousand.
Closer to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And seven percent?
Uh, seven is fifty-two, three ninety-nine, and thirty-four cents.
I, I, maybe I'm missing something here, but you've been instructing everybody to put in four percent, and I don't see where the, where the jailers come in different than everybody else. So, you, but if you fill it in with four per, I'm not saying they aren't different, I'm just saying what we've been instructing everybody. And you talked about consistency all day, and I think you gotta put in four percent. That's not, nobody's saying that's where it's gonna end up, but that's what we're saying, we're gonna put in to see where the budget works out.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think for simplicity, that makes sense, just because then we all know, okay, this is what we did. You know, we, we were consistent with that four percent. We, we're not making different changes to different departments worth consistent. I mean, it just helps us far as, to keep a standpoint and keeping track of things, and not going back and forth, back and forth. And like I said, it doesn't mean we're gonna stay there, but, but I think we should keep being consistent.
So, Roger, uh, from what I'm getting, can, can you put that in, at least?
Four percent across the board?
Four percent across the board.
Except for you.
Your salary. Your salary, yeah, it's up, and, uh, we'll start there.
Good, any other questions?
Nope, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Roger, for all the information, and, yep, we'll talk again. Okay. We have, Phil, you'll be next here. Tammy, you gotta leave it forward?
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Okay, so, we'll. You know how long?
It's just, the three of you, we canceled the other ones at the edge, so.
Yep, you're, you're it for today.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Um, this is medical death investigator is what he's doing.
Oh, okay. Yeah, do I get one?
I have three whole bunches.
You, you.
What, you need a real one?
I've got it.
I, I don't, we have our electronic ones.
We might need to get some more of them.
Not quite, not quite.
Three whole bunches.
Yeah. If we get one more, then we can have one down.
Nice. Keep it on this side. Okay, go ahead, Phil, whenever you're ready.
Okay, so this is the medical death investigation, uh, budget. As you can see, right below the bottom, yellow line, we'll just jump down there, shows twenty-twenty-two, we have forty declines and thirty-three investigations. Twenty-twenty-three, a hundred and twenty-nine declines, thirty-nine investigations. Twenty-twenty-four, we just finished, was a hundred and six declines and thirty-eight investigations. Uh, the reason I started there first, you see twenty-twenty-two numbers are low, uh, that's when this thing all started, um, when we took it over from the hospital. So, it's kind of a new work and project budget as we kinda have evolved. So far, we have returned money every year, um, in the budget that we don't use. Not enough so we're uncomfortable with just two years of actuals to make a big change, um, downward. But I felt comfortable enough that our increase this year was only sixteen hundred and eighty-three dollars over last year's budget. I think we can still operate based on these numbers, um, with that small increase. Now, we can't guarantee what's gonna happen in twenty-twenty-five, uh, we've had seven deaths already this week. So, um, it's, it's kind of a shot in the dark, but we do have two years of actuals, so I don't, I'm not forecasting, you know, anything to be really crazy, but things can happen. And I guess if something happens, you, are you guys comfortable with sixteen hundred, or you wanna add an extra thousand or two into that just in case, and, and put it back at the end of the year, or, or just go with what we have here? If things stay the same, I'm comfortable with these numbers. If we have a big jump of, you know, twenty, thirty deaths at the end of the year, uh, could be significantly different, or not significant, but could be slightly different. As you can see, you know, most of our salaries, budgets, um, salaries, FICA hypers is a part-time position. Uh, there's three investigators right now that we're paying. For that, we have, you know, a few four thousand dollars in supplies, and then, uh, a couple three thousand in meetings and mileage, and then our dues, it's about the extent of our budget. And on the very bottom there, I did some comparisons with the counties surrounding us. This was a comparison that I did last year, this is actually this, the information I presented last year. It just kinda shows the counties surrounding us are doing three hundred dollars for an investigation, a hundred dollars for declines, and then there's a different variation on what we consider horrific, horrific deaths. On what they do out, out in the other counties, you know, they're four or five hundred dollars on those, um, depending on the county. Some of them derive at that as a lump sum payment, and some are doing an hourly payment. We're, we're doing the hourly payment, is what we do. What I'm proposing for, for next budget year is the sixty dollars per hour. We do an hour and a half for declines, so that would be ninety dollars, we'd still be ten dollars under the surrounding counties, but we'd be closer than we're at today. And the sixty dollars, um, an average investigation is about five hours. So, sixty dollars times five hours, we're putting that to three hundred, and that's the surrounding counties. The on-call hours is a dollar twenty an hour to carry a pager and be stuck in the county for the week.
Any questions for Phil?
Then this is just kind of a breakdown of the.
Do you wanna explain the decline?
Yeah, what's the decline?
So, when this, when this, this is a real quick brief, not try not to waste time, but, uh, the hospital used to do all of our death investigations. When Martin Davis retired from the hospital.
Every death has to have an investigation?
Correct.
Everyone.
Correct.
Okay.
Back when Martin Davis did it, did not. He'd only give the investigations. The state did a change, and the state came out and said we had to start doing all investigations, all deaths in the county, because we were missing traumatic deaths that weren't being reported. For example, like falls in a nursing home. The patient, the, the person that was in the nursing home may have had an underlying health condition, but the fall that incurred actually is what contributed to their death. And because it was traumatic injury, those are required by state to be investigated.
What requires the autopsy? Is that still?
So, when we go out, so when I go out and do an investigation, um, I'm basically the eyes of the doctor, the physician is on-call. So, I go out and do the investigation, I dig up medical records from wherever they went to the doctor at, whether it be here, Mayo Clinic, or wherever, we find those records. We try to determine the cause of death. Basically, the wording in the law is, anything that is of interest to the public has to be autopsy. Motor vehicle accidents is pretty much, yeah, we autopsy all of those. Um, any traumatic injury is usually an autopsy. Other than that, if it's medical, we look at, um, prior health history.
Yeah, okay.
And then make a determination.
You guys decided.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I basically make a decision on whether we are recommending autopsy, then I make a phone call to the on-call physician, and then the two of us, um, make the final decision if we're getting sent to autopsy or released to the roll. Now, can I answer your question on?
Yeah.
What's a decline?
What's a decline? So, a decline is a death that happens within a facility?
Or under a facility.
Under, in a facility or under hospice care. Okay, so basically an expected death. So, on decline, we, we do not go to the scene, we do a phone investigation. And then we decline, we decline jurisdiction and do not go to the scene.
Okay, okay.
Anything else for Phil? Phil, anything else for us?
So, this one's pretty simple.
Yep, yep.
Okay, hopefully, you know, we get another year or two under, and the numbers stay the same, we can, you know, maybe.
Better adjust down, but, yeah.
I think we're good where we're at right now.
Sounds good. Thank you much.
Yep.
Have a good day. All right.
Are we doing anything with mental health? I see that's on the show.
No, we're gonna have to postpone that till next week, so.
Okay. Treasurer. Good afternoon, Nick.
Yes, good afternoon. Well, I, thank you, my assistant. Pretty straightforward, I did, I calculated the four percent raise, and things like that. Um, motor vehicle department, um, increased, increased supplies just a little bit, and postage, of course, 'cause that goes up every year. And then, driver's license, pretty straight forward, four percent. And FICA, uh, hypers calculated, you know, the numbers that we were given. Tax department, I did four percent except, um, for my deputy. I have tried in the past, I would like to have a first deputy in the tax department. I know the de, my deputy in the tax department right now's been there for, oh, about twenty-five and a half years, and, um, I mean, I would feel comfortable leaving her to run the whole office. She's very competent, and, and, uh, so I would like to increase that to the first deputy salary of eighty-five percent of mine.
And where's that at, which?
It's on, uh. Yeah.
Okay.
And then, uh, did the clerks at four percent, and then FICA and hypers was calculated on what that is, and uh, resupplies just a little bit there, and postage also for the property tax department. So, overall, for the expenses for the treasurer's office, um, with those three departments, it'd be an increase of two point two percent. Any questions on that part?
Is anybody a deputy downstairs?
No.
Okay.
Any questions on the expenses?
Okay. Um, okay, the revenues, excuse me, interest on investments, I left, uh, kept it the same as last year. Um, however. However, so far this year, we're gonna be, I know we budgeted three hundred thou, I budgeted three hundred thousand for the year we're on right now and we're getting close to the four hundred thousand dollar mark already, so interest rates are supposed to fall some, so I wanna stay at the three hundred thousand just to stay on the conservative side. I was able to increase the auto registration fees. The DOT made some changes. And we are getting more than what we used to get. Some of these, some of what we're getting now or as of December thirty-first, it was like that thirty years ago and I'm finally increasing it some where where we can generate a little, a little bit more revenue. So I did increase that one from a hundred ninety to, I think we're, we'll be able to go to two hundred forty-nine thousand on that one. And the auto use tax fees, that one was changed also. That one was very little for many, many years and they're increasing that. We got one dollar per vehicle. Now we're, we're gonna be getting eleven dollars. So that one increased quite a bit and that's the reason.
Yeah, I was starting to wonder if that was a typo.
I know. I think, I think Tammy thought it was.
I went over and, yeah.
But motor vehicle did the numbers and we did two, two years' worth of numbers. They're relatively the same and, and I felt comfortable with the increases that, that I put in, so. And other than that, everything else pretty much stayed the same on the revenues, so if all goes away, we, I budgeted, it should be about nineteen point eight seven percent increase on revenues.
Very good.
And just looking at the revenue, I, it just brings me to a question. So like the interest on investments, you know, are we over in, you know, in twenty-three, twenty-four, you are, you know, some, do we ever do reestimations at budget time just to?
We, during the, during the amendments, we, I said that it, I did not budget in the twenty-three, twenty-four, I had not budgeted four hundred seventy-five thousand. So during the amendment time, I, I approached the board and I said, hey, it's gonna be more than that, so, and it was more than what we anticipated.
Is it safe to say maybe that we might get in that five hundred thousand again? Because we're only about halfway.
Depends what interest rates do.
Yeah, I, we're, it's possible we're, we're getting close to four hundred thousand right now as of the end of December, so I would say we probably have to do an increase on the year we're on right now also.
Well, I was just wondering for budget purposes, if you do the reestimations. Do you do that?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and another thing was this motor vehicle stuff. That started January first, so we will be seeing
On twenty-five?
Yes. We will be seeing an increase of roughly half of what
Sure, even for our current budget?
Yes, yes.
We have January until January, to instead of December then.
So. But anyway, so there, we'll be able to look at that again and, and do some reestimating on interest and motor vehicle and use tax revenue.
Great.
Other than that, pretty boring.
That's okay. We're okay with boring. No, that, that's, that's good, good stuff. Any questions for Nick? Other than what we talked about?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Have a good day.
Hey, is your deputy that you have right now at eight?
Yes.
Okay.
In, in tax.
Yeah.
She's at eight.
Done.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You know, Tammy, I forgot actually that. But back, so, did the numbers change from when I submitted?
Um, I put it in your box. The changes, um, do you want me to go see if it's still in there?
If you could.
It's a couple days ago, but it might still be in there. It's under attorney, not county attorney.
Sorry, I'll go get it too.
Oh, that's okay.
I ran all your stuff. That was in your box.
Oh, well, thank you.
Debbie used to come down and, and get it and now she's gone. We don't see it.
Yeah, I'll have to assign someone else to that task. Okay, um, so I think the way I will approach this first is to address the operating expenses, uh, starting with supplies. You know, the, the, obviously, the administration side of things depends a lot on what you determine as a board to award as percentage raises, so that's just a, um, a situation where I put the numbers in as recommended with one exception, and I'll get to that shortly. But if you go through the budget and look at the operating expenses, uh, starting with the supplies, which is the second from the bottom on my sheet. Uh, I reduced that by twenty-five hundred. I looked at the history and I have a significant history, but the history of the supplies miraculously has gone down in the face of higher prices out there. And I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that our office has gone quite a bit to electronic. Obviously, the court system went to electronic filing and so there's less printing that we have to do. Uh, I'm eventually going to move the office to a paperless office. That's the goal. We still use paper, but in that effort to reduce the expenses of supplies and the fact that we have, you know, top-notch computers and IT department, I mean, we, we are comfortable doing that. And so I think that is in large part the reduction in supplies. So then if you go to miscellaneous, which covers generally everything else other than postage, mileage and telephone. The, I, I, I increased that and I wanna explain why. We have a large portion of that is computer-assisted legal research. And that has gone up. It was five hundred dollars a month for the past, uh, which was pretty much a basic, um, uh, program for that. It went up to a thousand dollars a month with AI. Uh, AI, as we all know, is the new thing in, in, uh, at least in computer-assisted research and generally in any type of research or other type of computer, uh, program situation. And with that, there was that increase of five hundred dollars a month. Uh, that is a portion of that and which, because of that change, there's now the ability that I can use that on my private side. So my intent with that increase is to also reimburse the county for my use of that on the private side. Okay? Uh, and so how they bill that is per attorney, so I'm looking at it as being three attorneys. Me as county attorney, my assistant who uses it extensively as well, and then me on my private side. So my firm's gonna reimburse the county for one-third of that additional cost of four, of four grand. So that's, that's, I don't, I mean, we have to pay for it, obviously, but there'll be a, uh, an increase on the revenue side, uh, which I didn't put in there because there isn't a line item. So you gotta tell me what you need there and then I'll reimburse the county, um, for that use, uh, on the, uh, on the private side. But that's the reason for that increase. As you look at the, the history, it's always been right about that ten grand, okay? So
You talked about that some last year, didn't you?
I did, yes. And I, but we didn't actually get to, with all of the things that went on with the budget, we didn't get to, or didn't get the direction needed to increase that. So we just need to add a line item, I assume, for that revenue. The rest of it, uh, with the exception of the telephone, um, has stayed the same. Postage, uh, has always been right around a thousand. I left it at fifteen hundred. Much the same as what you heard with Roger and Phil. I don't know what's going to happen in the future. Postage has gone up, but once again, we're doing more electronic communication than we are doing through the mail. So I think that's the reason why it's been consistently around that one thousand dollar annual expense. Uh, meeting and mileage, um, has pretty much always been under that. You know, there's, there's in essence, one conference that Stephanie goes to a year. Sometimes she goes to some specialty conferences. I don't, I don't charge the county mileage on mine, so, you know, it's just one of those things where it's always been sufficient for the mileage as is. As you can see, it's been significantly lower than that and obviously that has some room, uh, if the county needs room, uh, on that line item. Also reduced the telephone. It was five thousand. I dropped it down seventy percent to fifteen hundred. As you can see, the telephone has been, now that we've gone from cellphone to just the phone in the office and reimbursing for county use of the cellphone, that's gone down considerably, so I reduced that down. So as you can see, there's no change as far as numbers, uh, bottom line numbers, uh, with the, um, the expenses as far as just the operating expenses, just a reorganization of where that money is going to go. And the equipment, um, I think, you know, I left that the same. I know that there's a couple laptops in the office that are going to have to be replaced. And so, you know, depending on when that happens and how much they are, um, that's kind of, um, what we do as far as those expenses when they come in.
Fall under IT though, wouldn't it, for your laptops?
Is that where that comes out of now?
Yeah, probably, yep.
And I'll have to, I'll have to get with Derek, but then as far as the other equipment that's in the office, we don't have any, unless it's the copier.
I was gonna say, it doesn't include the copy machine.
Cause we bought the copying machine and now we have annual, that's where it is. So the copy.
Probably do have fees for that.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of right on track with what the, uh, the expenses are as far as that line item. And there was one for furniture when there was the demobbing that no longer is, is necessary. We're, we're fine there. So then it gets to, um, you know, really the, the things that, um, all of it's dependent upon what your decisions are. But the, uh, the amount of the wages. And, you know, the, obviously, my wage is what you guys set it as an elected official. Uh, Stephanie, my only deputy in the office, she's an assistant county attorney, is at eighty-five percent of my salary. Uh, and so those two just depends upon what you guys do. If you end up doing the four percent, that's what that's calculated as, as far as four percent. I have two new staff personnel in the front office. They, uh, one started in July and one started in December. They're in the STEP program, so one, the one that started in July will start her, you know, base wage then after the STEP program come July one, right?
Probation period and so, is that what you're saying?
Correct. I don't know what you guys call it. We call it the STEP program, probation period, whatever. It's that, it's what you guys passed as far as resolution, as far as their raises. And so then the other one that started in December will only be six months into it, then after six months, so December of twenty twenty-five will be, uh, her second, uh, increase based upon your, your, uh, resolution. Uh, what I wanna revisit, uh, same thing I've visited with the board last year and I know Howard and Amber are new to the, the board, so I'm going to probably reiterate for the other three, a lot of the same information. But I have a victim witness coordinator in my office, um, and that position is three-quarter time. But it's lumped under the current structure. It's lumped under support staff. And that doesn't necessarily classify what she does for my office. And so as I requested last year, uh, I'm looking to reclassify that into a new designation as far as, um, um, amount of pay. You know, what she does, even though she's paid for three-quarter time, is she is on-call twenty-four seven. Crimes aren't committed during the working hours. Oftentimes, as I mentioned last year, you know, we've had a thirty-eight percent increase in indictables, which are the serious ones, serious misdemeanors, all the way up to class A felonies and most of them have victims. All of them have witnesses. The victim witness coordinator, um, is basically responsible for making those contacts and calls to those individuals. I have a job description that I handed out last year. It's the same for you folks. And although I'm not asking for this position to be a department head, uh, it will still fall under my office. I'm, I'm requesting that, um, what that position does for the county be recognized uh, so that, uh, the compensation be comparable to other similarly situated individuals within the county. And so looking at that, just to kind of give you an idea, uh, you can read that at your leisure, obviously. I mean, right now, I'm just giving you the stuff. If you have additional questions, uh, you can let me know, but I have the individual, um, keep track of the calls, okay? Because there was a question last year, well, how many times, uh, you know, does, uh, this person get called after hours? From January first of twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, this individual received five hundred and fifteen calls after hours. That's not just during her regular working hours. Uh, including Fridays, um, Sundays, Saturdays, vacations, um, and, um, Thursday afternoons and then to the evenings, okay? Cause the individual works till Thursday, uh, one-thirty uh, and then is off after that, uh, till Monday. So unlike other positions where, you know, when you come in at eight, leave at four and then you don't revisit anything until you come back, not saying that everyone's that way, but it is in an eight to four position. And so I kind of, a lot of people don't know what the victim witness coordinator, how important is are, are victims in the state of Iowa? A whole, a whole code chapter is devoted to victims' rights. And this individual makes sure that Cassuth County Attorney's Office and the citizens of Cassuth County have all of those, uh, rights if they're victims of a crime. And she does a remarkable job, as do all my staff and as do all of the employees of Cassuth County. I mean, you know, you look at them and, and they perform well. She's been loyal to Cassuth County for twenty-six years, um, and, you know, I think that that should be recognized. What I did with that then, and I know it's not reflected here because it looks like you may have changed that because we didn't have the conversation before and it's something that is obviously, if you're gonna do that, you're gonna have to separate that from my office staff. The reason that's requested for the two of you who may not know is because of what happened, um, a couple years ago with the change in employment. It's across the board and you correct me if I'm wrong as far as, you know, raises. It's across the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, as far as, you know, raises that are given. So if you give four percent, everybody gets four percent across the board. So in looking at that, what I did was taking into consideration what, what she does for the county and looking at it from other similarly situated individuals who are separate from that tradition support staff, and they're not deputies, so it's not a percentage of mine, is I took point seven-five, three-quarters time of sixty-eight thousand, three hundred fourteen, which is another individual in the county who is separate from, or how is it classified, or I don't know how.
A deputy position, like a deputy?
Similar to a deputy, okay? Which would be fifty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Currently, victim-witness coordinator.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five, thank you.
And the, if you look at then, the, what my victim-witness coordinator's paid, and it's kind of blurred in that mass all-in-one, is forty-seven, three thirty-eight. So then if you do that, and then the four percent of that, if it's a four percent raise across the board, would be fifty-three thousand, two seventy-four.
Which category is it that person blurred into here?
Oh, I believe it is.
Other help, I think.
Other help.
Yeah.
One forty-eight, seventy-five.
Correct.
Thank you.
So the difference in just that wage would be five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars.
And if you guys don't remember from last year, we talked about this with the attorney, the HR attorney, a little bit, because she does fall into a different classification. She does not fit into the classification of the other step program people, which is why she wasn't affected by anything before. So he suggested we have a new resolution separate for her with her own classification. But because of the zero percent status, we weren't able to do that.
Right, right. And, and, and all of that was, was correct. And one other thing I wanted to point out, when that occurred two years ago, so the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year increases, others in the county were enjoying an eleven thousand, twelve thousand dollar raise, eight thousand dollar raise, six thousand. Her raise in twenty-three, twenty-four was two thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. That's not fair for what she provides to the county, and my office in particular as an elected official.
Did she win an award?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. You know, she was one of the, it's a, it's a state position. In other words, a lot of county attorneys have it. The AG's office has victim-witness coordinator. And so they have kind of a recognition for county attorney or for victim-witness coordinator. So in two thousand twenty-one, she received the award of excellence in victim services, and upon receipt of the letters of recommendation for, we received back an email saying that's the most letters that any victim-witness coordinator had received up to that date. So, I mean, I, I, I can't tell you enough how that benefits Cassuth County, because a lot of what we do in my office, a lot of, there aren't a lot of people that know, unless you're affected by a crime, okay? You guys would know, because I do work for you here as well, but, you know, it's the individuals who are at that moment in time most in need of someone to talk to, to know what services are out there to help them get through. And, you know, it, it's hard to say. People think, well, that's only when you have major crime. No, you could have a simple burglary. And the fear that someone broke into a house, even if they're not there, the fear that they experience as far as their threatened safety is, is, is consider, I mean, it's considerable. And so she lets them know what needs to, you know, what they have available for services. I have, even throughout the day and evenings, weekends, have seen her actually meet with victims. And not just victims. I mean, every crime has a witness or many witnesses. And her job in my office regarding that is when we get ready, you know, anywhere between two and four hundred cases a year is what we have on the docket. And in situations where those, those cases are going to go to trial, she makes sure, or deposition, she makes sure that those witnesses are notified and that they have a subpoena, that they understand when they have to be present and where they have to be. And so that help and assistance is, is invaluable to me. And as that relates to public safety, invaluable for the community.
Well, thank you for that. Yeah, good to have a refresher in that and two new board members be aware of that as well.
I'm sorry to keep you after.
No, that's okay.
No, you're fine.
Do you want that to be on its own line item?
I think it has to be.
It would need to be.
And, and.
I wrote that out and put it in a line item, so.
I don't know how that works in your world as supervisors. I don't.
I don't know that it has to be a separate line item, but it has to have a separate job description. It has to have a separate resolution.
But I think if we keep it in a different line item, I mean, I think that there's probably a category for it that defines the witness coordinator a little bit better than just a clerk.
Yeah, because the other two are clerks, basically.
Yeah, I don't have any opposition.
Well, it'd be similar to the class, but it doesn't really fit in the lawyer world as far as names, but yeah, that's what it would fall under.
Yep. And I don't have any opposition to another line item. I think that's fine. I just don't know that it's legally required to be split out, but.
That I can't answer. That's an employee, your employment lawyers answer that question, so.
Yep.
Yeah, but it, it doesn't hurt if it's.
No, no. That'd be, I think, it would be better up to go.
So are you telling me to do that, to change hers to the fifty-three, two seventy-four and add a new line item for her and then remove her from the other? One? Is that the direction? Okay.
Then everyone.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
That was the intention last year.
Yeah, until, you know, the budget constraints hit and.
Yep.
And I mean, even the other changes that you mentioned, I mean, we can all look back and say, well, it wasn't ideal under number circumstances, but our hands were tied in several ways. So I think it's overdue to address it for.
Yeah, and it's.
It wasn't pleasant on that situation either.
No, no. It wasn't. I think, you know, by and large, you know, the rationale or reason behind it was understood. It just wasn't pleasant, but. And like I said, much the same as Roger said too, I mean, that's, that's your, your analysis as far as what fits in the budget. I'm just presenting as an elected official, you know, what you need to know from my office.
Appreciate it. Anything else for Todd or vice versa? For today's purposes, anyway? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Have a good rest of your day.
So, yeah, you too. On the end of your day, I suppose, at least in the super. So then what's the next step? Are you guys going to have additional workshops or probably?
Get through everybody and then get.
Yeah. We're trying to get through everybody and then look at where our fund balances are sitting and evaluate from there. And hopefully, we get insurance sooner than later, but that's a wild card at this point yet, too.
And.
I'll make those changes and print out new sheets for you.
Did you do the four percent for the other two? That calculation, I see it changed.
Yes, I did. Yes.
That's fine. That's fine. All right. Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks, Todd. You too. Well, you need to get moving, so.
That was a good day.
Yep, yep.
I mean, we got through a lot, I think. Yes, Howard, we did.
Long way to go.
Yep.
You gonna get there just by Tuesday, or you gonna have to do more?
Hey, next Tuesday, we should be able to get through everything else.
As long as we don't have a long agenda in the morning.
Yeah.
You know, if you have short agendas, then you can get more done in the morning.
All right.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll get as much weekend done next Tuesday and go from there.
I would say if we can put something off on the agenda that can be let, you know?
Yeah.
Put it off if we can't, that's all.
Honestly, that'd be something right now we could talk about.
We have a ten o'clock hearing already set.
Yeah, drainage, drainage we can postpone, but we do have, we did talk about those two ordinances, solar and animal.
Can they wait?
Those could probably wait.
Put them off another week.
Yeah, I mean.
That's okay.
I have no.
Get, get done with the budget conversations, and we can discuss that following week.
I think so. Especially with this tight deadline of March first.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right, March first.
That's when we have to have it to the Department of Management, because we have to send out the cards for notification of the first hearing by March fifteenth.
The bad thing is without any, any raises from insurance.
Well, hopefully, that's gonna come.
Well, and.
I've said that before.
I've been keeping a running tally of what we have left.
I've said that before.
And, you know, it's, the ones we have left, I don't think will take long, except for the engineer. And we have ambulance, custodians, district court, then we have the allocations like FAIR, historical society, then auditor courthouse elections, sanitary and lead commissioner, mental health supervisors, assessor, and veteran supervisors.
Yeah.
That's it? That's all we got? Lot more?
That's, that's all we got, yes.
Did you even say anything?
Some of them in there aren't that bad.
No, they're pretty.
No, a lot of them are pretty straightforward, too.
Somewhere, somewhere in the, going through the stuff and preparing for this, you're looking at where everybody's at on their budget for the year, and is the supervisors already at seventy-five percent or something?
That's insurance. That, that's largely due to insurance. For, for our individual budget, you're talking the fund or the budget status report.
I think maybe. I don't even know. I wouldn't know how to get back to it.
Some of that stuff is taken out once a year at the beginning of the year, and so it makes it look like.
It's been at sixty-some percent forever.
Okay, all right, all right.
Yeah, if you have a once-a-year name and it throws off your percent just the whole year, once a year.
Some are one and done.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Nobody, other, nor the department has that.
Non, non-departmental has insurance.
Don't normally hold you up here. I'm not doing a lot of things, so.
And then after we're done, we'll just, we just flip through our book and make sure we addressed everything, you know, and.
Cool, yep.
Make sure nobody else has any issues or questions and.
And you look through fund balances and then look at the levy rates and go from there.
Have you done tax related revenues yet? Yeah, you did.
Yeah, not for, I haven't done it for.
Supplemental.
Supplemental, yeah. But I've done it for all the rest of them, yeah.
I was just curious.
No, because without the sheriff and in there, it's not gonna give me an accurate number.
No. No.
Because he has some stuff in there.
Okay. We'll get through it.
Yep.
Yep. Uh, one final thought for return here. I mean, as you can see today, I mean, I think we just need to decide as a board. We have a lot of good employees. We have a lot of good department heads. Everyone is going to have reasons, valid reasons, for why they want one thing or another. And, and some of them are gonna be easy. We don't need to see them again, but others are gonna take longer discussions, of course. But I think it's wise right now to stick with a consistent number and just wait it out and see where we're at. I, I think we're going in the right direction.
I think so, too.
And I, I just, it's, it's hard to communicate that sometimes, but, but, yeah, I think.
Well, it's easier for us to keep it in our mind.
Right, right.
You know, that, okay, no, we basically, we settled with that four percent. And then if we look at it and it's like, oh, okay, what would a five percent difference make if we could do a quick
Right.
calculation?
And it's not because we're favoring somebody more than the other, or don't want to support someone more than others, yeah, but, yeah, yeah, so.
Absolutely not. But we have to know that what we decide can be sustained, you know? You, you ever, there'd be humongous raises, but you gotta remember, okay, next year, you still have that. And then you gotta look at a raise on top of that bigger increase. It, it's just the sustainability and knowing where our fund balances are.
Yep.
Once we get there.
So.
And, and some of those changes that have been talked about of certain employees had a thousand-dollar raises, that also contributed to the sustainability aspect of that is. And our hands were tied in a lot of ways, and if we had a crystal ball, we could maybe go back and do the situation differently in small ways, but at the end of the day, all those things compound and whatever, even the decisions from last budget year stack onto this year. And I'm just cautious about where our revenues will be in total expenses.
Lots of good discussion. Tammy's gotta go, so take a motion to adjourn. It's on the motion by Wachter, second by Garman. Alls in favor of vote aye.
Aye.
And opposed, vote nay. Motion here is unanimous. So thank you very much, Tammy.